Good afternoon, Peralta community. It is 4:04. Thank you for joining us today as we have our special board meeting that is focusing on sexual harassment training as well as our enrollment academy. Right now, let us call to order the meeting again at 4:05. And let's do the pledge of allegiance. Trustee Handy, can you do the pledge of allegiance for us? Is that a, is that an absolutely yes?
I could do it in Spanish. Okay, are you guys ready?
Yes, we are.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for most people. Yes.
Thank you, Trustee Handy. Sasha, can we do roll call, please?
Yes, ma'am. Student trustee Hogan?
Yes.
Student trustee Cooper? Trustee Whitrow?
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins? Trustee Handy?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez Ewan? Trustee Bonilla? Trustee Delphine Polk?
Yes.
Trustee Napoleia Bella Reese?
Yes.
You have a form.
Thank you. Let's move on to 1.4, approvals of the agenda. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, trustee Whitrow. Second? Second, to approve the agenda? There are only three others of us. Trustee Handy, is that a yes? Okay. Oh, great. Second, thank you, trustee Handy. Roll call?
Student trustee Hogan?
Yes.
Student trustee Cooper? Trustee Whitrow?
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins? Trustee Handy?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez Ewan? Trustee Bonilla? Trustee Delphine Polk?
Yes.
Trustee Napoleia Bella Reese?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. 1.5, public communication. Do we have any speakers?
Anybody who is on as an attendee, do you have any public comments about today's board meeting?
Like, we have Lowell Bennett who has raised his hand. I'll promote him to the panelists. Are there any others here for a public comment? Please raise your hand. And Lowell Bennett is in with us. He can start anytime.
Hello, hello, everyone. Thank you.
Hi, Lowell.
Yeah, I just wanted to say how excited I am for the enrollment academy and to to thank everyone involved in all the preparations that went into it. I saw the agenda and it looks really, really interesting and exciting. And I hope we're able to ask questions. And I wanted to propose a few questions just to keep in mind, you may have heard me at the last board meeting talk about productivity, et cetera, et cetera. And I guess at the core of it, one of my big questions is how do we project next year's FTF? Now, FTF means classes. And within limits, offering more classes means more options for students than possibility of more students. So I'm really curious as how is that done? Is it based on some sort of a projection of FTS? And if so, how is that projection made? You know, what econometric and demographic data is used and how has that come about? And I understand that my understanding is that prior years FTS results go into a future projection. And if that's so, how do we get out of the downward spiral if we're always looking in the rearview mirror, as it were, to drive the car forward? So so again, thanks, everyone who put in the hard work to, to put the presentation together. And I'm really looking forward to it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Lowell.
We don't have any additional hands, so I think that's it for public comment.
All right, let's move on then to 1.6, and I will give this over to Natasha.
Thank you, President Reese. Good afternoon, trustees, cabinet members, chancellor Jackson, and community. I'm excited to be sharing the first part of what is going to be a two-part training on sexual harassment prevention. Let me share my screen and then you can jump in. So, we are doing this in two parts for a couple of reasons. One, obviously, you have a very important agenda item after this one. And so we wanted to make sure that we were able to give that enough time. And the second reason that we're doing this in two parts is because we wanted to try to do the second part when we can be in person. Sexual harassment and discrimination retaliation prevention training provides a lot of opportunities for districts to get to discuss and work on and engage in some very important issues that impact districts in many different ways. And so the first part, what we're intending to do is really work through some of the compliance elements of the training requirements so that in the second part, when we're hopefully in person and together, we can do some deeper dives into some of the areas that provide for some really exciting opportunities around conversations, deeper understandings, and helping us create the kind of environment we want to have in Peralta that is free of discrimination and harassment and really places a lot of emphasis on a culture and a community that has everyone feeling valued and safe. And so that's, I just wanted to make sure that we outline kind of the reasons and our intent behind the two-part compliance element of this training. And also, as we jump into the slides, you know, please go right ahead and ask questions, trustees, as we go through, and I'll be happy to answer them now when we have a little bit of time at the end for questions as well. So our objectives for these next 55 some minutes are to continue to work towards ensuring that Peralta Community College District is an environment free of discrimination and harassment, to review the definitions and types of sexual harassment, to review where the district's policies and procedures are so that you're all very well aware of them, and to make progress towards the compliance of AB 1825. AB 1825 is the state legislation that requires this training every two years for supervisors for all employers with more than five employees in the state of California. The, and then subsequently, the legislature has indicated it to be a best practice for elected officials. Also, some elected officials are required to go through the two-hour training and some, for, and for others, it's considered a best practice. Interestingly, when AB 1825 was first drafted, the legislative intent and the history around this this bill that required this two-hour training for all employers with more than now five employees was really focused a lot on the cost of the impact of harassment and discrimination on employers, right? So they looked at included the studies on what are the financial costs to institutions and to private corporations and companies and businesses throughout the state when harassment or discrimination goes unchecked. And the legislative answer to that was, look, we've got to curb this. It was interesting to me to study that legislative history and not see the language I think I anticipated or expected there to be codified around, well, what kind of work environments do we want? What are we looking to create? What are we seeking to be as the employment standard? And it really looked at this, you know, very focused kind of dollars and cents analysis. But in the years since AB 1825, and this was, this legislation was adopted in 2006, we've seen dramatic changes in kind of what is considered reasonable and unreasonable in terms of conduct around sexual harassment and discrimination. And I do think that while these trainings can sometimes be painful and, you know, feeling onerous for employers in our, in the districts that I serve, we've seen kind of this repeated coming back to have these conversations, you know, particularly when we can be in person sometimes, allows for organizations and their leaderships in particular to create kind of cultural norms, community norms, and protocols and understandings in and amongst leaders that allows for another kind of level of consciousness around what could be considered harassment, what could be considered discrimination, and how do we want to address that kind of conduct if and when we see that happening? So in many ways, I think these trainings really are important because prevention and education works. The prevention and the education happens often through the dialogue in the course of the, of trainings and creating space to even have those conversations, believing that we can create environments where everyone is feeling safe, valued, honored. And it helps, of course, to limit our, the district's exposure of, which is a strict liability standard, and we'll talk a little bit more about that in the slides, and avoid personal liability because supervisors in particular have the ability to carry personal liability when harassment goes unchecked. And then, of course, to avoid the impacts of harassment on low morale and other very significant impacts that can, that can happen in institution when you don't have these things monitored and checked and you're not working towards creating the kind of environments that you want to have. So what is the district's obligation? It is to ensure that employees in the workplace are working in environments that are free from sexual harassment. And for students, the legal standard is that they are not denied the benefits of the district's educational program and activities because of sexual harassment. So those are two distinct legal standards, and we'll delve into each of them slightly as we go through. Um, this is an important slide. You never shed your hat as a board member. So what do we mean by this? Why is this important? Often, when we're talking about our administrative staff, our leadership, including our elected officials, we know that you wear many hats, right? You are sometimes parents, your faculty members, your grandparents, your sisters, siblings, your friends, your, you wear so many hats, right? You're engaged in so many organizations. And you know that when you come to the dais, when you walk onto the district's facilities, you're wearing your hat as board member, right, as elected trustee. But when you're in the grocery store, when you're at the movies, when you're at the, at the lake, like, how does that responsibility change and what does it look like when you're outs off of the dais, when you're not sitting in the district office or something like that? And this slide is intended to really highlight the fact that once you're kind of in the deep end of the pool here, you never actually get to take this hat off, right? And it doesn't matter if we're at the grocery store or the movie theater or at the lake or at a soccer game or at the athletics game. It doesn't, it doesn't ever, you've never shed it. And why that's really significant is because information flows in so many ways. And you are approached, people come to see you, come to talk to you about things happening in the district all the time. And when they do, there are certain types of information that can, that hold tremendous, for which you hold tremendous responsibility. And that includes information that could be harassment or discrimination. And so the slide is at the top of the training to make sure that you recognize you have a very specific a very specific responsibility for how that information is handled. If you see it, if you become aware of it, kind of in any, at any time, 24/7. Sasha, I can't see if anyone is trying to ask a question or anything like that. So if you see anything.
I see no hands yet.
So what is harassment? In our district, we define privated harassment in two board policies, board policy 3430 and 3433. These policies will be part of the sexual harassment package that all of the trustees receive at the end of the training as part of our compliance. It's important to know where these policies are. They are available to you and to all of the members of the public in our community on the district's website, as well as the complaint procedures that go with them. And they're also, of course, available in the district's human resources office. So there are a number of laws that impact and touch, define sexual harassment, both federal and at the state level. Those are listed here on this slide. And the definition in California is that harassment because of sex, including sex harassment, gender harassment, and harassment based on pregnancy, childbirth, or related medical condition. That is the California definition of what sexual harassment is. And then we'll talk more specifically about what that looks like and the different types of sexual harassment that exists. Under the federal standard, it's defined as unwelcome sexual advances, requests for sexual favors, and other verbal or physical conduct of a sexual nature when it's made a term of employment or when it causes a negative impact in your employment. So the protected class areas, and this applies specifically to sexual harassment, but also to other Title VI and VII claims, which are when someone is treated differently due to their race, religious creed, mental disability, physical disability, veteran status, gender, orientation, ancestry, language. You know, so this slide is really intended to cover all of the various areas that are part of the protected classes. And that is one of the key elements when we're doing a sexual harassment analysis or discrimination analysis based on race. These are the various protected class areas that are the beginning of what is the basis of that sexual, of that harassment or of that alleged act of discrimination. So we generally look at sexual harassment in two types. The first is a quid pro quo. At this point in the training, I typically do a few pop quizzes for, because of time and because we're in this virtual, I'm gonna, we're skipping those for now. But when we come back in person, we will do a little bit of a deeper dive on some of these areas to make sure that we're having an understanding of what this can look like in our district and what it can look like when we might hear about it or hear rumors about it or see it and what we should do about it in those, in those moments. So quid pro quo, this for that, right? It's when, you know, one of the common cases is around employees are at a conference. Trustees are at a conference. And after a session, one says to another, hey, why don't you come back to my room? I want to help, I want to help give you notes on how to do, how to really do wonderfully at your next evaluation, right? Something like that. Now, of course, we're looking at the power dynamic, the element of what is the impact of that request, as well as, you know, the, any potential retaliation for turning such a request down. That's your classic quid pro quo harassment. Hostile work environment, and this is the, unfortunately, the more common analysis that we do for employers. What is hostile work environment? This is an extremely overused term. Hostile work environment does first start with the analysis of the protected class area. And so we, because it is kind of taking a life of its own in terms of our, our common language, we often talk about hostile work environment when someone just doesn't like something going on in the workplace that that feels hostile to them and therefore they're working in a hostile work environment. The hostile work environment is actually a term of art that relates to when offensive conduct is severe and pervasive enough that it could unreasonably interfere with a person's ability to perform their job or create such an intimidating, hostile, and offensive or abusive work environment that they, again, aren't able to perform the elements of their job. Or it's so, so clearly inappropriate that the environment could be created, could be considered a hostile work environment. So when we're doing the analysis of pervasive and severe, you know, we often think of it as an act. It's like, it's a single act that can be severe, that can mean, okay, we've reached, we've reached what is the standard for sexual harassment. Or it could be small things that are happening in your work environment, in the district learning environment with frequency such that over time or over a period, these things have created an environment that become hostile and impact or impede an employee's ability to do their job or student's ability to access their education. And so this can, these are both, both quid pro quo and hostile work environment are highly fact-sensitive analysis. But the hostile work environment is really the one that you're looking at all of the elements in the work environment, all of the parts of a potential allegation to determine, has the conduct being complained about either reached a place where it is pervasive in the work environment or in the learning environment? Or is any single act or any couple of acts so severe that, you know, that lines have been crossed and that we're talking then about inappropriate conduct? So what does sexual harassment look like? What does discrimination look like? It can come in obviously many forms, speech, nonverbal conduct, visual, visual elements, posters, drawings, things like that. And then physical, you know, that's an assault, a rape, a forced touch, an unwelcome kiss. You know, all of those things would be considered physical conduct. Speech, we're talking about comments, jokes, compliments that are not compliments, things like that would be elements of what speech when used as sexual harassment can look like. Nonverbal conduct, you know, the person who holds on too long, who comes over your shoulder really to get too close, avoids your personal space, who is using their eyes in a way that makes you feel really uncomfortable. Those things could be considered nonverbal conduct that, that whenever sexual nature can constitute an element of sexual harassment. And then the visual things, posters, drawing, pictures, screensavers, things like that that can be part of an analysis of sexual harassment. So when we talked about, you know, severe and pervasive, you know, often this training, especially for, for, you know, first-time administrators, first-time leaders, can be really confusing around like, well, how do we, you know, how do we tell a joke? Like, how do we bring humor? How do we figure it out? And the, the analysis that we use, what we share with, you know, particularly new administrators learning how to balance and manage their work environment around the standard of strict liability is to know that what the court does is they look at whether a person of, a reasonable person who is defined as someone of the same gender would find that conduct to be severe or pervasive, right? So this is called the reasonable person standard. And that is the community, right? That is why we talk about how we as a society are looking at and deciding what is appropriate and inappropriate for a workplace and how, and this is one of the areas that we've really seen a lot of clear change over time, right? Jokes or statements that might have been acceptable in the time of, you know, if anybody's watched the show Mad Men, like, that advertising world back in the 60s and how women were treated in those work environments would be completely outrageously understood to be unacceptable now. But even in the time since 2006 to where we are now in 2022, there's been dramatic changes around what's acceptable and what's not as a society and as a culture. And the way the court gauges that is through this reasonable person standard. And that's how you have the jury process and all of that work with that. It's important to note that harassment, sexual harassment and sexual desire are not connected. Under the law, the Department of Fair Housing and Employment took this step in 2014 to make it explicitly clear that sexual desire is not an element of sexual harassment. The reason, and this has actually always been true, the reason we believe that the Department of Fair Housing and Employment took this additional step to clarify this standard was because so often when you're conducting an investigation around sexual harassment, one of the first things a respondent might say is, oh, I would never, I never think of that person this way. I would never even want to date that person. You know, comments of that nature because it was, because it was so hard for employers to help, for employers to understand that sexual desire is not an element that the Department of Fair Housing and Employment finally had to say, like, we're just going to put it into the law. So it's, it's absolutely clear that this isn't, that this isn't the standard. It's also important to know that harassment can involve anyone in our workplace. So, you know, we obviously recognize we have an obligation to our employees and our students. But that obligation is not only for, in between employees, between administrators and employees, between students and students, faculty members and students, employees and students. It also includes visitors, contractors, third parties, members of the public who are on our campus, you know, people visiting or attending a football game or a track meet, like, our obligation is to protect our employees and our students at all times from all people who are, who are coming to our campuses or attending our events. And it's all, and then the last part of this is that harassment can occur and people can be impacted by harassment even if they are not the target, right? Even if they're not the person or the individual who is being, who is subjected to, you know, let's say, inappropriate jokes. So the example here is you have a workroom or a lunch space and two employees are engaging in friendly banter that amongst the two of them is welcome. They're telling jokes that they each find funny. But I have to go and work in that lunchroom. I have to take lunch in that lunchroom as well. And I don't find these jokes to be appropriate. That impact on how I experience their jokes is a very valid issue and a claim for the district to consider. If that lunchroom has become, you know, severe or pervasive, we're using the same analysis, such that I'm not able to take my lunch break there or I have, you know, I have, I'm feeling impacted by those jokes, that's part of the analysis that the district must do. Because it isn't just the two people involved that, like, you know, that are the standard for when the district may or may not have liability. So, an important point around how we look at strict liability. I mentioned this in the first, in the first slide because strict liability is an extraordinarily important legal standard. And as supervisors, leaders, elected officials in the district, you carry strict liability. So what is it? It means that if you are aware or should have been aware of sexual harassment or discrimination in our district, that alone is not the trigger for your, for liability for the district. So to say it another way, whether you knew or didn't know, isn't the standard. How can that be? How can we affect something that we don't know about? How can I stop? I'm the chancellor. How can I stop sexual harassment in this district if I didn't know about it, right? This is the importance of what strict liability means. It means when someone in a position of power in our district engages in inappropriate conduct, even the chancellor doesn't have a chance to intervene and stop the conduct to prevent liability. Liability is automatic. Right? If you are a leader in this district, you are the district. And when that standard is an extraordinarily high one, that means that anyone who carries these titles of leader in our district, their actions are, we are strictly liable for their actions. It is the same as the board engaging in the action. It is the same as the chancellor themselves engaging in the action. So we hold our administrators, our leaders, our elected officials, our chancellors to the highest standard. And that's why they require everyone to sit through this training for two hours every other year because the standard is so high. You did, the district doesn't even have the benefit of getting to learn about it. It's very apparent is the standard for strict liability. The standard is different for employee on employee, student on student, faculty member student, you know, all of those coached stu- those standards are different. Right? So if you have at one of our campuses uh two employees and one of them feels harassed, right? As soon as the president of that campus, as soon as an administrator at that campus becomes aware, the clock starts to tick. Right? That's where the district has a chance to say, okay, I now know something happened. And now the clock is on. I gotta do something about it. So what is that do something about it? That's what we'll talk about in the coming slides. But the standard of strict liability that attaches to leaders' conduct, to administrators, to supervisors, to elected, that's what you really have to take from this slide. Um and the non-employees, so I had mentioned earlier that when we have a visitor, when we have a third party, when we have someone attending a football game or a track meet, that they, that they can also engage in ha- in conduct for which we are responsible. That is the the slightly lesser standard of when we know we have to act. If you knew or should have known, you have to act. So we'll get into, well, what is the act? Um and I'll come back to this later. So how do you avoid liability? What do you do? It's when you know what you're, you have policies, that's your first defense. Having policies, the district has policies, they're good policies, they're on, they're online. We disseminate them, we make them available. The second thing you do to avoid liability um is you engage in training. So you comply with AB eighteen twenty-five. Um and you have the conversations, you keep the district up to date. You continue to work towards ensuring we create environments that are free of discrimination and harassment. And we're creating environments that value our employees, value our students, value our community, and make sure that everyone is feeling safe. Um and where, when incidents occur, we act, we act quickly. We take complaints seriously. We investigate claims thoroughly and fairly. And when we have the information from an investigation, we take the appropriate actions. Um and sometimes that is non-action, where maybe an allegation didn't rise to the level of sexual harassment. Or maybe it's discipline or possibly something different. Uh maybe it's more training. So there are various ways. And as you all know, sexual harassment, this, the standard and the world of what these claims and cases look like is a, is a wide, broad world. And so each one is very fact sensitive and has a different impact on how, what the appropriate response is. But it's making sure that we have um followed our policies, done our investigations promptly and fairly, and then we've taken the appropriate action after that. Um so here they are again, adopting the appropriate policies, communicating them to essential employees. If you do end up in a place where the district is quote on trial, when we're, we're having something considered by a jury, you know, what, how, how the complaint was handled, how well the investigation was done. These are the core issues that are assessed by a jury in the, in these cases. Um so this is a a repetitive slide. Um retaliation, a super important part of sexual harassment training because more districts, more employers are actually found liable for issues of retaliation than they are for issues of harassment or discrimination. And why is that? How is that? Because sometimes districts panic, employers panic as they are handling the complaints. Sometimes we just don't know and we make, and 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 many mistakes are made. And sometimes we haven't done a good enough job on really addressing the issue and making sure everyone knows what ta- what retaliation is. So examples of what that could look like. You get a complaint um and an employee says, let me use a private sector example. Um so you, you're a corporation and you have an employee complaining that when she attends or he attends um goes on sales trips with a colleague that they're made to feel uncomfortable and that they believe that the, that the colleague that they travel with is engaged in sexual harassment. And the supervisor says, oh, this is so serious. I'm so sorry you feel that way. You don't have to take any more sales trips. Right? Employer, well-intentioned. Uh right? You don't have to take any more sales trips. I'm gonna just take that assignment off your plate. You can stay here at the office, right? That has potentially many negative impacts on that employee's um trajectory, on their work. But more than anything, what that did, it is it feel, it it immediately impacted our complainant before we've conducted an investigation, before we've been able to talk to the respondent, before we've done anything. And that's what what retaliation can look like. So in those examples, well-intended, right? You have, and this can get really challenging. You have a complaint from an employee against a a really, you know, a principal at a, at an elementary school. You can't necessarily move the principal that easily. And you think, oh, but this other employee who isn't leading the entire school, I can move them to keep them safe. Right? That feels like a really good immediate response. But something like that can also be seen as retaliation and it has been found to be retaliation when we aren't getting to the core of the issue, we're impacting the complainant and not the respondent after an investigation. So retaliation, how is someone treated once they file a complaint? Um how are, how are their vacation leave granted? Are people, you know, is the supervisor um leaving them out of meetings, things like this? So one of the challenges and one of the things that I spend a lot of time counseling uh employers, clients on is once you have a complaint, how does everybody act? What do we do? How do we ensure that nobody is being retaliated against? How do we keep the district moving while we're dealing with these sensitive issues? Um and that's part of really, really working on creating environments that allow us to recognize that complaints are tools. They're part of our process. We have to be in environment, we have to create environments that welcome them and recognize them as important modes of communication and of prob- and of addressing problems when they do arise. Knowing that, um knowing that uh as public employers in particular, and this isn't, this isn't coming from this slide, but an important note. Knowing that as public employers in particular, we draw from a very diverse set of backgrounds. And as each of us come to a work environment, it's with different life experience, different levels of sensitivity, different everything's, right? Different religions, different language, different culture. And, you know, we're, 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 we're thrown into a workforce. And so how people communicate with each other, what one person finds funny or okay, and when another person finds uh you know, harassing and unsafe can be really different. Um so it's through complaints and sometimes, and through conversation, of course, before complaints, that we're able to start addressing these issues and trying to find kind of areas of um of like standards where the, where the district can say like, look, these, these are the standards of what's appropriate and what's inappropriate. And that's how we need to create situations where we're having these con- conversations collectively to make sure that the Peralta standard is clear. Um so we've covered this slide, workplace bullying. AB eighteen twenty-five was revised in, um it was revised in twenty fifteen to specifically include abusive conduct. Abusive conduct is a really interesting change in the law. Hopefully not just to me as a lawyer, but a really interesting change in the law because it's the first time that the legislature looked at a standard of abuse that did not relate back to protected class protections, right? So all of the harassment and discrimination we've discussed so far relates back to protected class, race, gender, et cetera. Abusive conduct is what we call the uh the equal opportunity abuser. It's the manager, it's the supervisor who yells or screams or speaks inappropriately to staff, regardless of who they are or why. They just are abusive kind of to everyone. And it's not ever because of someone's a woman or someone, someone's sexual orientation or their race or their national origin, right? It's, they just treat everybody poorly. So what the state legislature did in AB twenty fifty-three is say, we want you to incorporate specifically training on abusive conduct. Make clear to employers and employees alike that abusive conduct is unwelcome and inappropriate. They didn't go so far, interesting as law continues to change and develop in this area, to say that someone can actually sue you for this, right? So there's no liability to a district when you have abusive conduct under the current statutes that we use for sexual harassment, discrimination. But we're seeing a clear change in terms of what courts and juries will find acceptable um and how they're looking at abusive conduct by the quote equal opportunity abuser. Um and so the, the first way that the legislature is trying to impact this is by requiring it in as part of the AB eighteen twenty-five trainings. So abusive conduct is defined as conduct of an employer um um or or employee in a workplace with malice that is, that a reasonable for person would find hostile, offensive, and unrelated to the legitimate business interests. Um unlawful harassment is conduct focusing on that person because of who they are versus the person who's just mean and wrong all kind of to anyone. Um the, the, the way we assess abusive conduct is by repeated infliction of or you, of verbal abuse, derogatory remarks, insults, uh verbal or physical conduct that a reasonable person would find threatening or intimidating or humiliating, and then gratuitous sabotage or undermining of a person's work performance on kind of a repeated basis. It generally doesn't include, you know, a single act um of, you know, a single act of yelling or a single act of um of unreasonable conduct wouldn't be considered abusive conduct. But it's kind of like when we talk about severe and pervasive, you're looking at the pervasive standard when you're looking at abusive conduct. So what do we do as a district to avoid um sexual harassment and discrimination? Uh we need to work on creating respectful environments. You know, we start with the basics. Um and as you've seen, as you know, the board well knows, you have been specifically working to articulate and hold yourselves to higher and higher standards. And you've spent a lot of time really trying to be the role models for the standard that we want to have throughout Peralta of creating respectful environments. Um we, we do this as leaders in our programs, in our departments, in our areas, in our offices, um in our virtual offices, by really making sure we connect with the people that we serve and that we connect with the people with whom we work. Creating environments where people feel comfortable raising issues, where people feel comfortable explaining and speaking about and and trusting a process that can be problem solving is the kind of environment that one considers a healthy work environment that does avoid liability around these issues and is the type of environment where employees really feel valued and are able to come to work and do their best work because they know that if and when issues arise, they can trust in a process that will help address them. They can engage in those problem-solving conversations. They feel safe and they feel valued in bringing the issues up when they do arise. Um consistency is a key element of avoiding liability and of creating the type of environments we see. Um making sure that our policies are clear and that they're consistently followed have significant effect. Um and then making sure that people do know where our policies are and how we, how we address complaints um is part of that too. I have a specific slide on gossip. Um there are few things, few things in our, in our environment that can be significantly undermining to how complaints are handled and how we build trust amongst our employees, our students and our community for how we handle things. And gossip can be one of the most threatening. And recognizing that administrators, not only in Peralta but across the state and all the clients that they serve, work in really high-stress environments. And sometimes it's the one relationship you have with an office manager or with um someone in the staff where you can let loose a little and you share and how that language, how that can go through a district in seconds and destroy someone's confidence in the process? Or how quickly information can, can work itself through and really undermine the, the, the ability of a district to adjust challenging issues starts with each of us as leaders. And so it's really holding ourselves to an extraordinarily high standard of recognizing the damage that what might feel like a foot comment or, you know, a s- a s- a small remark, how that can really impact the confidence and the leadership and its effectiveness district-wide. Employee conduct is a confidential matter. And so, you know, we, we need to keep um investigative matters, complaints and other information that comes in that process highly confidential. So what do you do as a trustee if a complaint is brought to your attention? What do you do? Any ideas? Please, President.
Talk to the chancellor.
Yep, talk to the chancellor. Anyone else that you could talk to?
Human resources.
Human resources, right. So there are two, please, Chancellor Jackson. Chancellor Jackson, were you gonna say something?
I'm sorry, I was, I had a question a, a long time ago. Um and i- i- it's not on this particular subject, but if you could, um and persistence. In your earlier slides, you talked about uh persistent behavior. Is there a legal definition of what persistence is? Or is that kind of nebulous and left up to us to say, well, it's happened three times? Or the severity of the first time it happened was such that we need to take immediate action? And that was my question. And then on the, the question about what do you do? You report it. You report whatever, um and I'm, I'm stealing that from uh President Garcia, who has worked in that area in student services um and and knows because the Title IX coordinator worked for her, and that's the thing, you report it. And you do not promise that you won't tell someone the name of the individual because people will say, I'm reporting this, but I don't want my name to be used. You cannot, you cannot, I'll say it again, you cannot say, I promise I won't tell them who I got this. You cannot do that. So that's my question, and then that's my answer to your question.
Thank you, thank you so much, Chancellor. Yeah. Thank you in particular for highlighting the issue around anonymous complaints. Right? It happens with frequency that um, you know, you, you, you run into someone. You've known them for a really long time in the district. And they say, you know, I just, I'm sharing this with you in confidence. I know you're a trustee, I don't, I don't want you to do anything about this. But at my campus, I've been ma- I've been made to feel really uncomfortable by X, Y, and Z or such and such is happening. You know, my president tells inappropriate jokes at every cabinet meeting. It makes me feel really uncomfortable. I'm just sharing it with you to let off some steam and, and share it with you, but I don't want you to do anything about it. I'm really hoping that I'm gonna get a promotion soon, et- et cetera. What do you do? You've known this person, you have a relationship, all kinds of things. Like, how do you handle a situation like that? What is the expectation of a trustee? The expectation is that you will share with the person that you're speaking with early, as early in the conversation as you can, that as a trustee, you have an obligation to act on the information they've shared. That you need to share this information because you are required to and because you believe and you want them to know and believe that you, that this conduct will be addressed, that they shouldn't have to work in an environment where they feel that way and that whatever the issue is, it needs to be looked into. Not that you're promising that, you know, what they've said is gonna be taken as truth because we don't know until the Not that you're promising that, you know, what they've said is gonna be taken as truth because we don't know until the investigation has occurred. That other element that the chancellor highlighted is also critical. We can't promise that we can keep anyone's name anonymous. One of the fundamental elements of due process in the investigatory process. Is that a respondent has to be given the name of their accuser. So that they can address and provide the context that they may feel relevant for whatever the allegation is. And so our ability to hold that information anonymously is very, very, very challenging. Um, we do, we are able as a district to handle investigations with giving as little information. As is needed to in, to people that we have to engage with in an investigatory process. So it's not that names have to be given to everyone, but in particular to a respondent, for them to be able to fully address the concerns or allegations that are raised. They have a right to that information. Um, and so anonymous and not so, to make promises of, yes, I'm gonna get this information to the Department of Human Resources. But I'm not gonna share your name with, they'll never know, or you know, those kinds of things aren't promises we may be able to keep. And that's why we don't make them. Just even though you win.
Thank you, um, can you clarify? For the board as well as for other people here and probably separate paths. What in fact the, the reporting path is normally, we would go to chancellor. We might go to board president. That'd be sort of the normal course. Um, but in discrimination complaints, sexual harassment complaints. And those might be treated differently and I'd like some clarification on that. And some other protected class of discrimination complaint versus sexual harassment complaint. Is in fact, there a specific path in HR? That a trustee should feel comfortable going to. Normally, I wouldn't go to the head of HR, that, that person doesn't report to me. Normally, I would think that would be inappropriate, but maybe this is a, a separate category. And then the other thing that I think would be helpful to address is this. When you have knowledge of. Or you suspect. A situation of sexual harassment or any other kind of harassment or discrimination in a protected class. Do in fact you have? Is there board policy or district policy that says? You actually now have a duty to. Report. So that, and, and I say this in particular because it seems to me that. Unless there is. A clear path for investigation. Clear procedure. Then in fact, there can just be a lot of gossip that flies around. That never gets resolved and it's extremely, it's extremely damaging to the institution. To have allegations, rumor, innuendo about. Any miss. You know, any illegal activity in this regard, particularly sexual harassment, but other protected classes. Is there in fact a duty? Is there in fact a policy that says you have knowledge of or you suspect now you must go, you must do this thing? So those are, that's three separate kinds of things. If you can respond, that would be helpful.
Yeah, sure. So the first about who does a trustee report their. Uh, uh, an allegation to. Um, yes, the board president is an option, the chancellor is, is an option and the, and the reason I raise. The Vice Chancellor of Human Resources is because they are the, the official complaint officer for the district. Now, who, what is my advice to the Peralta Board? That unless the allegation involves the chancellor, your first call, your first email, your immediate text should be to the chancellor. Unless the complaint involves an allegation against the chancellor. Your first call, your first email, your first text should be to the chancellor. If the chancellor is unavailable to you for any reason, your second call should be to the Vice Chancellor of Human Resources. Um, the board president is absolutely a, a, an appropriate person to respond to as well, but they would then have to make this very same call. And you're not, so it, it's not a problem to copy them on this, on this correspondence to include them, but you're. It, as a seven member board, each of you hold this responsibility distinctly. And so your first call is to the chancellor, um, e- almost every single time. Unless you're, unless the allegation involves the chancellor themselves.
And if the allegation involves HR?
The chancellor.
Then go to the chancellor.
Correct.
Okay.
Um, yeah, so hopefully that's really clear. Um, as to the second question about do, does the district's board policy. Clearly articulate the duty to report for administrators. The district's board policy in all districts, not only Paltas, is actually drafted with the lens of complainants. Right? So it's talking about what is harassment. It isn't like a policy manual for how administrators, leaders. Um, and those who hold strict liability for the district, how they are to handle it. That's in part why these trainings do occur so regularly. But it is, it's a really good idea for us to look at, you know. Put making it more explicit in what the policy is that when you hold. This level of responsibility in the district, you have these obligations. We actually wanna create an environment where anyone who sees experiences or is aware of harassing or discriminating conduct. Feels comfortable that they should raise it themselves, not that, oh, I'm, I'm a faculty member. Um, and because a dean was in the room when something happened, I'm just gonna assume the dean will raise it, right? We want to create an environment where anyone who has knowledge has. Feels comfortable and confident raising the issue themselves. But you're right, a dean, uh, any level of administrator, any level of manager. Hold a much higher standard. Um, and so we really, really do want them to know and part of this is, you know, all your administrators are trained in AB eighteen twenty five. And so they should be and are, and I believe they are getting these messages very clearly. Right within, you know, the, the, the legal obligation is that they're trained within six months of arrival in the district. Um, or any with any new employer. Um, but we can look into the policy itself. Um, trustee, did I miss the third question?
Yeah, so expand now on sexual harassment and look at discrimination complaints of any protected class, a credible complaint. Well, is there, is there an analogous? Responsibility, like we're, we're having a sexual harassment training, it's mandated. We don't have. Other kinds of discrimination. Complaint. Trainings that are mandatory in this way, but let's say it's an allegation of. Age discrimination and it's a credible one. Or racial discrimination and it's a credible one, it's not just sort of light gossip. Is there in fact, an analogous responsibility? And we have policy and procedure that speaks to that, like here, you know, president so and so. You are now aware of this, now you should, you must. You have a duty to move forward with, you know. A complaint to the chancellor or HR.
Yeah, so the answer to that question isn't like a, a quick one. In that within each of the titles and within the California statutes, there are actually some variances in the standards. Depending on the type of discrimination that it is. It's a kind of a very nuanced standard for a, a training like this. The standard that I believe the Peralta should hold itself to is this standard of strict, the same standard we're using when we're talking about strict liability. Right? We wanna hold ourselves to the strictest, highest standards so that we can address issues and root them out. Um, as soon as we become aware, as soon as we can. And so I think that from a practical perspective, using the AB eighteen twenty five standards that are described here. Is the best. Um, if, if in our part two session, we can definitely go into a deeper dive around each of the nuances. Around these various standards, like Title Nine, for example, we do have a couple of slides specifically on Title Nine. Does hold a different standard, even though that's gender based discriminations and it has lots and lots of overlap. With, with the, with the sexual harassment standards that we described and race discrimination. Um, you know, also extraordinary overlap, but there are some different nuances as the case law has developed both in California and federally.
So I would just encourage us to look at administrative Paul, administrative procedure here. And if such a thing isn't really clear, let's make it clear, just so there's no ambiguity. About what in fact we're supposed to be doing, what is in fact our duty? And you know, what's the norm? Um, cause I think there's some, there's some ambiguity here. Uh, that we should, we'd probably be better served without.
Okay, um, I mean, I don't want, I do, I know we're, we're reaching our time and we'll, we'll need to transition to the, to the next topic for tonight's meeting. But, um, I don't want there to be any ambiguity on what is. Um, the standard the around strict liability. Uh, uh, everyone who is an administrator or manager in the district is the district. Their, their conduct is conduct for which the district can be strictly liable. Right? We don't have the benefit of should have known or knew about so that the chancellor could then address. And you're, what should also not have any ambiguity is that if a trustee becomes aware of allegations, right? So when I talk about what do you do if you receive a complaint? What we don't do is we don't say, well, let me call a couple more people and see if I can verify this information. What you don't do is make promises of we will provide you justice because that's absolutely inappropriate. We're not gonna allow that in the Peralta community of all this district. What you don't do is say, wow, why don't we think on this and let's check back in in a week and see how you're feeling then. What we don't do is say, you know, when the issue happens again, then let me know, right? Those are the things we don't do. We receive an allegation, we receive information, we become aware of information, we call and let the chancellor know. Right? We let the chancellor and her department and her team figure out what is the level of response? What is the type of investigation? Who should be in the investigator? How should a manner be addressed? Is it something that requires first a conversation with a complainant? Is it something that can be mediated? Is it something that needs an independent investigator from the outside? Is it something that the Department of Human Resources handles internally? Is it something that's handled at the campus level? Is it something that, you know, like there are so many ways that these matters are addressed. But if we don't have this information, if the chancellor isn't provided the benefit of that information. That's when we, we lose the ability to address it, we allow things to fester and grow. And so hopefully there's no ambiguity, at least on those two elements of the training so far. The chancellor also asked an awesome question that I haven't, I don't have the time to fully address today, but that is part of the part two, which is. What does pervasive mean? Like what's the standard for pervasive? So what this, the slides thus far have made clear is the standard is in California, we use a reasonable person. The courts use a reasonable person standard. The work I wanna to do as a community and as leaders in Peralta is what are the Peralta standards? Right? What's okay and not okay? What's welcome and unwelcome conduct? And our standards are gonna be higher than the reasonable person's standards, right? Because we're creating an environment that is free of discrimination and harassment and is one in which all of our employees and students thrive. Um, and so since we want to be the model, those are the conversations that we'll get to continue to have as we continue this. Um, and then we can keep going on in terms of the training of where are the cases? What is the legal standard? How have districts been impacted? And what are the best practices that really can help support districts in creating the environments that we wanna have? So with that, um, let me pause, are there any last questions that I can address? Before or because we are gonna do a part two, I encourage you trustees, if you have any other questions. That you'd like to have addressed in the second part of the training, please send those to the chancellor and we'll be sure to have those incorporated as well. Chancellor, let me turn it back to you.
Thank you so much, Natasha. Um, this took up the first part, phase one, like I said, we have a requirement. Uh, for two hours, um, you went a little bit over, but we started a little bit late, so thank you very much for. Um, for that presentation and. President Napolei Valeris, if you'd like, I'll go right into our, our next portion. Um, so the next thing on the agenda is a presentation by PFT President Jennifer Shinowski. Uh, President Shinowski had asked to put this on the agenda previously. And because it is such a, a topic and, and I wanted to thank those of you that are in attendance today. Um, that we felt that we really needed to provide a forum where we can do a deeper dive, not just have a presentation, ten minute presentation. You know, and, and then go about our way and really nothing i- is discussed. So during the, the next session of presentations, the first one being by. President Shinowski and then the second one being a, a combination, kind of a, a panel discussion. Um, I'll start it out with some definitions and then we'll also have. Uh, Vice President of Instruction, representing the colleges as a, a whole. Um, interim Vice President Diana Bajrami. Then we'll talk about some of the marketing because that was one of the questions that came out at one of the previous meetings. What are we doing in terms of marketing to, with our enrollment? Um, and so that will be done by, um, our Executive Director of Marketing, which is Mark Johnson. And then we'll finally finish that up with the survey that we conducted this spring. And that was done by our Associate Vice Chancellor. Um, Francisco, Dr. Francisco Herrera and also Dr. Stephanie Joker. Who is been overseeing in the absence of having a, a Vice Chancellor over. Um, academic affairs and student success has been handling that, so. Her and Francisco will close up the evening. Anytime during the presentations, we have a couple of hours before, you know, we think that will be finished. Um, please ask questions. Um, if we have questions from those in the audience. Um, we will also try to address those questions as we go along. Um, just please let Maisha and Sasha know if you'd like to ask a question a- as appropriate. Um, sometimes it may be that we're going to address it later on in the, in the presentation, so we may defer it, but we want to. When we leave here, my hope is that we will have a clear understanding of enrollment management, what that means. Uh, what our numbers are, you know, what we're doing as a district, not only as a district, but also what the individual colleges are doing. At the level of Vice President, which is really Vice President of Instruction oversees our instructional components on the campus. But we also have some of the Vice Presidents of Student Services here and we have the Presidents. So all of us or any of us are open to address that. We have got to get this right. We have got to stop pointing fingers, we have got to stop blaming one or the other because of where we are. And we have got to come together to address this. Um, some of the things that we, I've been seeing since I've been here is that kind of adversarial, you know. Infighting and, and that serves no one, that does not serve our students, so. We have got to get this right and I think the best way to do it is to have communication and understanding. And if we disagree, we can disagree. You know, but at least we understand the position of the other individuals. And maybe we can come to something that will be satisfactory and in the best interest of our students. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to, um, Dr. Shinowski. Um, so that she can make her presentation and then right after that, we will go into the presentation. Um, that the colleges and the district have put together to the items that are in the, in the packet. So is Jennifer?
She, I'm here.
Jennifer, did you want me to share?
Uh, I can manage it so that I don't have to annoy you with, um, asking you to move the slides, is that okay with you? Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen. So I wanna start off by thanking all of you for, you know, thank you to the chancellor, uh, board president. Cindy, uh, and Diana, Vice Board Vice President, um, for allowing us to present this.
and Diana, Vice Board Vice President for allowing us to present this data. I want to be really clear before I start. You know, this is really me digging into the data to ask questions. And I know sometimes when we ask questions, it can feel like it's accusational or that it's blaming. And I'm really not, this is not an attempt to blame anyone or to, to make any accusations. It's really an attempt to engage in the, in the data in a serious way and ask questions that we really feel are important for us to understand and that we've been asking for a long time without any real dialogue and, and any real substantive answers. So where possible, I will cite where the data comes from. I've given this presentation several times already to many faculty groups. I also gave it to, at our flex day in January. But I've had a really difficult time engaging with administration about this data and about these, about these slides. So I, I welcome this opportunity. So thank you again. So I'm going to jump right in. I'm, you know, gonna talk to you a little bit about what we're going to look at so that you know what's coming. You've probably seen the presentation already, so you know. But in the beginning, I want to go through some data that comes from the BI tool and from our budget books, previous years and just this last year. And then talk a little bit about the way that course cutting impacts us. The fixed cost analysis, I'm actually going to sort of gloss over this. This wasn't in the most recent version of this presentation. So I'm going to gloss over that a little bit and then talk about some goals for our district. And, and then, you know, some sort of low hanging fruit that we see that we could do and that we're not doing right now that could help us. So I have some definitions here. I think all of you are quite well versed in this, but for those at home, I want to just, you know, give a moment to go through some of these definitions because I guess we're all at home. But I mean, you know, the people that don't do this every day. I want to give some definitions because I think these acronyms can be really daunting. So FTES, when we're talking about FTS, we're talking about full-time equivalent students. And these are essentially the number of FTS is a number that we use to measure how many students we're serving, right? That's sort of what it means. FTEF, that's full-time equivalent faculty. We can look at this number and this is an assessment of the number of faculty that are currently working, right? Just so that we're not getting bogged down in the definitions and we're looking at the overall picture of what these numbers are. Productivity is brought up a lot, especially by management. And productivity is often, you know, referred to as efficiency. And it's essentially a ratio of the number of students per faculty member. And it really relates to a class size. So it tells us something about how many students are in a particular class. Okay, so I want to dig into some of the data. I don't have 21, 22 on this slide because at the time that this was put together, we didn't have solid numbers for 21, 22 because the spring wasn't done yet. So I just want to look at these, these values and explain what these are and where these come from. So the top number FTF, this is full-time equivalent faculty. So again, this is like a measure of the number of faculty. And you can see that in 2017, 18, so five years ago, we had 1,243. And then last year we had 1,039. So we went down by a little over 200 FTF. Our yearly FTES is shown in the next, the next row. And you can see there that we've gone from 18,802 down to 13,079. And then the FTS rolling average that I got from the adopted budget books, these numbers are important because our apportionment is based on those rolling averages and not the absolute number from one year to the next. The next line is something that I want to explain. So what I did with the next line was I simply took the FTES rolling average. So that's the number of students that our apportionment would be based off of, right? If everything was sort of normal and the old way. And I converted that to a 17.5 productivity to find out how many faculty, full-time equivalent faculty, we would have to fund in order to have, you know, meet the needs of those students at a productivity of 17.5. So it's just sort of a benchmark to use to measure sort of where we're at. Now, we all know that when the student-centered funding formula or SCIF was implemented, the state also gave us full harmless funding. And so our funding is not, not to go below the 2017, 18 levels, right? For the foreseeable future. And I know there's a lot of talk about when it will end and how it will end. But we certainly have a few more years with pretty stable funding from the state that's based on these levels of funding back here, right? And so just to sort of look at these, we can, we can imagine that if our funding is at this level, right? And we actually are looking at a productivity target of 17.5, then we are talking about a funding FTF of 11.11,1109 full-time equivalent faculty. Okay, so everybody sort of follow me there? Because my, my argument here is, let me go back. My argument here is essentially that we need to be mindful of the fact that we're funded at this level here. And that even with this productivity measure that we're talking about, we're talking about funding 1,100 FTF. So next I want to, you know, go through a couple more definitions for the next slide, the next slide, apportionment. So I'm using apportionment simply to, to mean essentially our general fund dollars, which are the dollars we get from the state per FTES. We know that apportionment depends on that three-year rolling average. And we know that the student-centered funding formula changed the way that our funding would be looking going forward and would include an equity factor and a success factor. Hold harmless provisions, again, I just said this, but I'll say it again because I think it's worthwhile for everyone to hear it more than just once. Basically, our hold harmless funding was to provide time for a transition to the SCIF. And districts were to receive this hold harmless money and be assured that funding wouldn't, wouldn't go below those 2017, 18 apportionment levels with COLA added in. So if we look at our general funds, and this is all out of the districts published, finalized, voted on budget books. So if you take each of those budget books, you can pull out these numbers. But you have to get the budget books independently and individually because these are not compiled together. So I went through all of my old budget books and put through what our general fund looked like. And you can see that there's some fluctuation, but overall, from 2017, 18, I'm sorry, from 2017, 18 to this year, our general funds have gone up by $3 million. Okay, so our funding is stable, right? And there's a small increase. District office funding, so here I'm using district office funding to mean both the centralized services and the district office costs. Because what we have allocated to those two different pots has changed over these years. So this is all of the funds that go to district office staff and district office positions and costs. And you can see that the district office funding in millions of dollars has increased at double the amount that our apportionment has. So in those same five years, as apportionment has gone up by $3 million, the district office funding has increased by $6 million. And it's a large percentage that increases a large percentage. And again, I have our FTES and our FTF shown here. The FTS is from the budget books. The FTF is from the BI tool. So that first screen, when you open up the BI tool, will show you the number of FTF that are actually utilized each year, and that's what the, these numbers are. And you can see again that here from 2017, 18 to 2020, 21, we've, we've cut 200 FTF. So to put these numbers sort of in a place that allows them to be manageable and mean something, a cut of 200 FTF is equal to cutting 1,003 unit sections. Each FTF can teach five three-unit sections because that's 15 equated hours. And so five times 200 is 1,000. So we're talking about really cutting a significant number of sections from each of our colleges when we're talking about cutting our FTF. In addition, it's about 20, it's about 20% of our FTF that we've lost in the last five years. This does not include the parcel tax funding that is supposed to be augmenting the courses, the course offerings that we are providing. So if we look back at that slide that I had, where I'm calculating what the FTF looks like here, this doesn't include augmentation of parse, from parcel tax dollars. And we've, we've gone around on this many times in the past several years. But parcel tax funding is supposed to be spent on instruction and supposed to really been, be spent augmenting the class offerings that general funds are not able to offer. Okay, so I'm not going to belabor this point, but I do want to just point out that when we look at the way that our funding is changing over time, we can see some clear trends. These are the administrative positions out of the state chancellor's office data mart for the district, BCC, COA, Laney and Merritt. And you can see that the staffing levels, this is from 2010, 2015 and 2020, the total has gone up. We don't have data for last year or this year yet, or I didn't have it when I accessed this data from the state. And if we look at the staffing levels for faculty, we can see that in that period, we've had a dramatic decrease in the number of faculty FTE. So if we look at that sort of as a pie chart, right? Total positions, then what we can see is that we have had a significant shift away from faculty and towards administration. Now, of course, I'm the PFT president, so I, I care about faculty jobs. But before I was a PFT president and in addition to being a PFT president now, I'm a teacher. And as a teacher, I care about students. And what I know is that we serve students by teaching classes, right? That's our primary goal and our primary focus. And so the loss of these faculty members is really important because it means that we're not serving students. Okay, so just to summarize sort of where we're at right now, what do these numbers all tell us? Tells us that we're cutting student access by cutting the courses that we're offering. That funding has been increasing overall, even while we're reducing our courses. That district costs are continuing to increase and that we're increasing administrative positions. And I say for what purpose, but I'll get to that in just a minute. I mean, if we have fewer faculty and fewer, you know, staff and fewer students, it's unclear why we would need more managers. Okay, so I'm going to shift gears a little bit. And I want to talk about some of the issues that faculty often bring up to administration as problems that are sort of, I think, misunderstood. So this is the current course cutting policy. This is a policy that has been distributed from the Office of Academic Affairs many years. I cut this from an email on May 1st, 2020. And this is the course policy that, that folks are implementing. And I've highlighted one of these, one of these benchmarks that says, "One week prior to start of classes, the Division Dean and Vice President of Instruction mutually agree upon canceling classes below 25 in consultation with department chairs." In practice, what's happening often is that classes that aren't filled, and by filled, that means 25 students, that they get, they get cut that week before classes start. And we've been pretty strict about that. Those classes have been really, you know, cut from our ledgers in the week before classes. And we're told time and time again that it's being done because it's the fiscally responsible way to manage enrollment. But I will challenge that with a couple of pieces of data. So this data is a little bit old. This is the most recent data that I was able to find available on our district websites. This is the Sesi data. So this is the community college student satisfaction data. And what we see from this data, and I, this question was only asked at BCC and COA, but the numbers are, are similar enough that I would assume we could extrapolate this to Laney and Merritt as well. And what you see is that about three quarters of students were registered for all of their classes, right? So a week before classes start, we've got about three quarters of our students ready to go, ready to hit the ground running. But that means 25% of our students are not yet enrolled in all of their classes, right? That's a large chunk. And we see that six to seven percent weren't registered for any of their classes. So that's more than one in 20 students have not registered for a single class before the first class day. If we are cutting a week before classes start, what that means is that those students, when they look around at what's available, have fewer options. Okay, that's why I bring this data up. I think it's important to look at. We also did an analysis of just one class in fall 2020. So this is a small data pool. But the district could certainly look at this data for a larger number of courses. So we looked at math 13, math 13 is statistics. This is a transfer class that folks have to take and is, you know, a pretty high demand course. And what we see is that of the almost 100 students in math 13, in canceled math 13 classes, one third of them did not re-enroll in another section of math 13. And then what we see is that another third of them were unsuccessful in completing their math 13 course despite re-enrolling in another section. So as a chemistry instructor, I can tell you, you missed the first week of my class. You start off at a real deficit. It can be really hard to catch up. And so we don't know that that's what this data means, right? We don't know that these are students that wouldn't have been, that would have been successful if they had stayed in their class. But certainly it's a possibility in a class like statistics. So this is all to say that cutting classes the week before they start has inherent problems associated with it that we should at least consider when we are doing those kinds of, when we are doing those kinds of cuts. Okay, what about across the board cuts? So I'm going to use chemistry data here, forgive me. I know that chemistry is not, is not representative of all classes. But I know chemistry well. And so it was easy for me to pull this data and look at it and use it as a representative example. So often when we're cutting our FTF allocations, we are doing across-the-board cuts. So we want to be fair. We don't want one department to lose more than another. And so when we cut the allocate, when the district cuts the allocation to the college, the college often then cuts the allocations to departments with an across-the-board, you know, decision-making process. I'm not saying that always happens. I just know that it happens a significant amount of the time. For chemistry, chemistry is a class. This is, you know, a, a very high demand course. Our Chem 30A courses and our Chem 1A courses fill every Our chem thirty A courses and our chem one A courses fill every semester. We can be assured that those are courses that are, you know, impacted courses. The higher level courses have a little bit lower enrollment, especially our organic chemistry sequence, right? Um those tend to have lower enrollment, so those pull our productivity down a little bit. But what you can see is that from fall seventeen to fall twenty one. As we increase the number of sections, we increased the number of students, right? And as we decrease the number of sections, we decrease the number of students. So there's an approximate gap that remains the same. And I would, I know that that gap really comes from those higher level courses. Um because we have to offer those to be a comprehensive um program, to have a comprehensive program. And so you're always going to have a small gap. But when we cut chem thirty A. We're cutting, yes, we're cutting an F T F, but we're also cutting fifty students that would be served if we offered that class. So when we're talking about enrollment management, we have to do more than simply make make across the board cuts. We have to think about what those cuts look like and how are they at, how are they impacting student access? You know, we, I'm sure many of you have read the articles recently talking about how community colleges really need to up their game when it comes to um the health sciences. Well, how are students going to get into the health sciences if they can't get through the chemistry prerequisites that they need? Okay, so I want to sort of like pull it to the end and and really posit the question, right? What's our goal as a community college district? Our goal is to provide a high quality education to students in our community so that they can meet their own goals, right? Their educational goals, their occupational goals and their personal goals. Financially, like if we really think about what is our goal financially, it should be to serve as many students as possible. To grant as many degrees as possible and to place students in as many jobs as possible. This is how funding from the state comes, and this aligns with our mission. And so my question and the ultimate question I have is, how is it that the decision to continue to cut classes the way that we have? While while still receiving stable funding from the state is meeting any of these goals? And I know that there's this argument that it's fiscally responsible for us to cut classes because we've lost students. But I would argue that fiscal responsibility, that's really number one, a business term that shouldn't be applied to public education that is fundamentally here for the public good. That's number one. Number two, I would argue that if we are required to downsize. We cannot just downsize what is directly serving students. We have to downsize overall our entire district. Because we are not putting the savings for cutting classes year after year into our general fund, our our savings, right? We're spending it. So my question is, where are we spending it? And why is it that we're not spending it right on our students, right? Right where that will impact them most and impact all of us in five, in ten, in twenty years? Because our funding in five, ten and twenty years is going to depend on the decisions that we make right now. Um, that is my last slide. I would like to add one last quick editorial, and that is this. I also think that we have a great opportunity right now. We have a great opportunity to reimagine what we can do for our community. The students in our community are really suffering. Everyone has been through a really challenging couple of years. And if we don't take the opportunity we have in front of us to make something different and make something better. Then it is really a shame to all of us. Because we have the ability, we have the money. And I think you'll find that we also have the will from from, at least from your faculty. Um, and so I will conclude there, and I thank you again for giving me the time to present this data.
Are there any questions of Jennifer? From the the board? Or anyone in the audience? Okay, I I did want to make just a a couple of points if there's there's no questions.
Chancellor, um I'm sorry, um trustee Gonzalez Yuen has his hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see it.
You know what? I think I'm going to wait until the end of the presentations because some of these questions might be answered. I after the administration presents and and then we can have a more robust.
Thank you. Thank you, trustee Yuen. I I just wanted to make a just a couple of things before we go into the the second part of the presentations. Um, one regarding the the budget for the district. I just want to point out a couple of facts. One, we received over sixteen million dollars to augment our budget based upon Kears and Herth three funding. So the part of that is represented in that percentage of increase of funding and that is not going to go away or not going to stay is what I'm I want to say. And if that wasn't part of what you had, Jennifer, I really would like to sit down and talk to you about which what you're using for your figures because that was what my number showed when I looked at it. So and again, that's why we're here. So I took some notes. That was so that was one thing. And then the the other one um had to do with the using the productivity to say what we should have, but then saying that the productivity number is not accurate because we don't have enough faculty. I will tell you that our faculty obligation number, and I did put that as part of the resource documents that are out there. Um, and I believe that based upon what the state has shown us in twenty twenty one, we were over by twenty one over our faculty obligation number. And then in twenty and twenty twenty and twenty twenty one, we were over by almost forty. And we are getting ready and that's documented as part of the resources. So it comes from the state, not B I tool or or anything like that. Um, and then the other thing that I was going to say regarding the numbers was that we're getting ready to hire. We receive funding from the state in the amount of one point four million dollars and that equates um into about eleven faculty members. And I I just need to say this, so please don't kill the messenger. Um, but with the hiring of eleven new faculty members. That means based upon faculty load in full time equivalency, which Jennifer um defined, and I had that in our presentation, so I'll go over it very quickly. That means that those faculty members, those eleven faculty members will be able to teach five sections because that's what our factor is for them. Which means that that equates, if you multiply that by eleven, that's fifty five sections that will no longer be available for adjunct faculty if we do not change. If we do not change and increase our enrollment. Parcel tax. Other sources of funding will not be able to absorb that number. And we are getting ready to go out for those positions now. The, we just looked at those numbers. We were a little late in getting it out. Um, as some of you know, interim vice chancellor Med just had surgery and uh won't be back until May, but we are still somehow managing to pull it all together um so that we don't stop that progress, but it was delayed a little bit, but that um announcement, the presidents, I believe, have already shared that on their campuses. So I would really like to to look at those numbers. Um, that you have to to see what that differential is in terms of that because um I think some of the things that we're going to talk about will show it a little bit differently. Um, so did you want to?
Can I respond?
Uh, I'm sure.
Yeah, those numbers for the district office, those are district office and centralized services budgeted out of the general funds. Those come out of the district's budget books. Those do not include CARES Act or her funds or any other
Okay.
special funds. So that does not include that that sixteen million. And also the numbers that I'm using for the F T E F, those have nothing to do with the FON. So those are, those are collapsed um full time and part time faculty. So that has nothing to do with hiring new faculty or, right, whether they're full or part time. That's the overall allocation given to the colleges. So David, I'm going to pick on you because you're at Merritt. So if David gets an allocation, you know, of three hundred F T E F. He has to first, well, whoever at his college has to first fill all the full time jobs. And then whatever's left of that allocation goes to part timers. But the FON is a measure of our full time faculty obligation. And that is not have to do with productivity in any way. So those that, the my numbers have nothing to do with the FON. Um, you know, I think we can look at the number of Z Z assignments that we have at our colleges. And we can be, and and also if we look at the number of full time faculty teaching this last semester, it was less than half of our classes are taught by full time faculty. So we we have to have more full time faculty because we've lost something like a hundred. Uh, something like a third of our full time faculty members have left in the last several years. And we still have all those administrative jobs that are under faculty purview. So I, it's much more complicated, I think, than just just classes.
It 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 absolutely is because when you say the faculty are doing administrative jobs, but we have too many administrators, it just is counterintuitive to me.
No faculty, but those are faculty purview jobs. So those are jobs that have to be faculty jobs. So like department chair jobs or um certain senate parts of the ten plus one. That's what I mean by administrative job. So as the legislator.
Yeah, and and we can look at that because I I think that it's not just those. I think it's also augmented. Um, Dr. Joker, did you want to speak to the sixty percent or sixty six percent?
Well, the, so regarding the FON, um, we do have to report our full time to part time. And based on last year's report, we were at sixty six point one percent of part timers teaching.
That's different than what the B I tool says then. So I think our own data, then we should look into that because I just pulled all the data.
I think that's one of the first things we need to do is identify the validity of the data so that we can all have that conversation. And and that was what I was saying. If if the data that you're looking at is different than the data that we're looking at, and I see Dr. Herrera is also raised up his hand. Then that can be part of the misunderstanding and part of the discussion. So, uh, Dr. Herrera.
Yeah, thank you, Chancellor. I I was just going to say, uh, what you just said, which is um yeah, the B I tool um is a good estimate of the final of some of the numbers. But we're really for when we do reporting, we rely, what we report to the state is on the three twenty report and P F T report. And so those are the final numbers after we've done uh recalculation and those have been verified. So the B I tool is useful for estimation. Um, but really those aren't our final numbers. Um, but we would be happy to collaborate um with with Jennifer and other parties to kind of make sure if they need some data, we'd be happy to share um the data. The verified data we use to the state so that way we can be all on the same page about how um the numbers are calculated and what those final numbers um should be for reporting. So, thank you.
I see another question.
You're on mute, Chancellor.
I forgot I muted myself. Um, so maybe there are some other questions, but we can go and start. So um, Maisha, if you would bring up the presentation. And we're doing kind of a tag team um approach on this. Um, I'm gonna have the the board take a little test just to make sure you, you know, like a good teacher does. I have to get my my feel of being a good teacher any kind in any way I can. So um I'm going to have you just do a little quiz later on. I'll give you the answer. So um, don't worry about that. But I'll start out with the introduction. Um, as I said, uh, Dr. Basirami, uh, Dr. Joker, Dr. Herrera and Mark Johnson will also be doing their parts regarding this. And if you could go to the next slide with the agenda. And these are the things that um we're going to be talking about. I I do have some definitions, um but I also provided those definitions in the handouts and the resource information that I provided. Um, we're going to go over, just like Jennifer did, a little about what F T S and F T F is. Productivity um is a factor that's used, and we'll talk a little bit about that in terms of student enrollment. That's also a term that's used. We'll look at enrollment management. Um, look at some of the historical and current enrollment data that was used by the colleges in terms of making decisions about cuts. Um, look at what are our marketing efforts and our enrollment strategies that we've employed this last year as well as what we plan on doing in the future. And then we'll finalize that with what our students are telling us. And um that survey was conducted by Dr. Herrera. And that will, I think, shed some light on on what what do our students want? We guessed with what they want, but that information um will be coming from the students. Um, so if you need to get to the packet, it is, um Sasha, is it, was it posted on the web and under board docs or where is that information available? That was just a question I I just saw in the chat. So.
It's been added now.
I'm sorry, you're going to add it to the link? Okay, can we go to the next slide? So these are some of the resources. They were part of the board packet that went out. Um, the FON compliance for all um of the community colleges that comes out with the state provides that information to us. We pulled together some glossary of terms. They're not exhaustive, but they have pertinence to what we're talking about in terms of enrollment. Um, some of the background for our enrollment management comes from a document that was a sanctioned by the I E P I uh institutional effectiveness and planning initiative as well as by the chancellor's office. And the authors are are listed above. And it really talks about F T S and efficiency. This is a second edition of that. It's only thirty nine pages long, so I would encourage um those of you that are interested to to please rate it. Um, I developed the F T S calculation, a helpful handout, something that I used when I was a a vice president, things that I've collected, which also talks about some of the same topics um in terms of definitions. Um, the B I tool, which we use for some of our data, I I believe. And then also, um, like I said, our student survey. So um Sasha just said you can go and get the packet on the board docs because it's been published. Next slide. So I I wanted to make this a little bit fun. Um, so you know, please pay attention, students and board members and people in the audience. So just like Jennifer said, F T S is determined by the number of hours of attendance, and you'll notice the hour five twenty five. That is the value that is used to determine what one F T E S is. So when you're calculating F T S, you can look at it by a student. If a student has, like you see where the circle is, thirty hours a week, one student. Multiply that by seventeen point five because that's the number of weeks that we have in our semesters. We have a fall and we have a spring semester and you multiply all of that out and you get five hundred and twenty five hours. One F T E S. You can also calculate it based upon students, the same thing. One student, thirty hours a week, seventeen point five weeks, and you get five hundred and twenty five hours. You can figure it out for a multiple students in a class. The example is thirty students at five hours a week. You multiply the number of students by the number of hours divided by thirty because thirty is the factor that determine how many hours per week. And guess what you get? You get that that class, that one section of thirty students equates to five F T E S. Why is that important? It's important because for us, we are not a basic aid campus or district. We are funded based upon F T E S. And even when we move to SCIF, seventy percent of our funding will be based on F T E S. And currently, if you go to the budget book, I believe we are currently getting and I wrote it down, so let me see if. and I wrote it down, so let me see if I can find it because it's online. Um, we are getting four thousand two hundred and twelve dollars and twenty-six cents for every FTS. And that, like Jennifer said, is based upon a rolling average. So it isn't the same every year. So that is why we look at FTS. And we look at it as a factor rather than looking at it in terms of numbers. Because if we just count its sections, we could say we had three sections. But that's why we look at the total number of students in those sections based upon the factor of thirty hours a week. And divide that, multiply that by the number of weeks so that we get that, how many FTS that we have. Okay, next slide. Next slide. The number of FTF, full-time equivalent faculty is the other thing that we look at. In our district, and it depends on what district you're in. If you're in a district that's on a quarter system, you will have a different full-time equivalent faculty number. Some districts have changed the number, but for our particular district, a full load, you will hear people say, I'm teaching a full load. That means that one instructor is teaching fifteen hours a week each semester. That is one FTS. Okay, so example below. If you teach a four-hour class, then your load is twelve. Because you're teaching that class three hours times four. And you take that to figure out what the FTF is because twelve is not a full-time load. Remember twelve is part of a load, fifteen is a load. So you take the load, you divide it by fifteen because that's the standard for one FTS. And you get that it is point eight of a full-time equivalent load. And the reason that's important is because we have adjunct instructor as well as full-time instructors. And so we aren't always gonna come up with one FTS. We come up with percentages of those. And then we go through and the system goes through and adds all of those numbers together and those percentages. And that's how we come up with our FTF. And as Doctor Herrera said, that isn't a number in our BI tool. But if a class gets canceled or if it's changed, or we go to add late start classes, all of those things factor into what we have in terms of FTS and FTF. Okay, so in this particular case, if you had thirty students, same as we just did before. If we have thirty students and they're in a five-hour class, we already figured out that's five FTS. What is the FTF? The FTS is to take those five hours divided by fifteen. Because that's what it takes to have a full load. And you find that for the FTF, that's point three-three. Okay, have I lost anybody? I'm not a math teacher. Okay, all right, let's go to the next slide. Productivity. I know a lot of people don't like the term productivity, that it's talking about businesses. But it really isn't meant to do that. It's really looking at what is our student enrollment and trying to determine a factor that looks across disciplines and looks across the curriculum so that we have a common metrics for determining and making decisions. That's all it is. It's not saying we're a business. It's not saying, it's not mandated by the state. But I will tell you, if you did a survey throughout the hundred and sixteen or seventeen colleges within the state, probably ninety percent of them are using some kind of enrollment or productivity factor. And a lot of them are using seventeen point five. In fact, in the reference that I just told you, um, the second edition of the I E P I document uses the seventeen point five. It's a standard measure. And that standard measure says, we feel that thirty-five students per class is what our productivity is. Should we change that productivity? Maybe we should, maybe we shouldn't. If we do change it, there are ramifications for funding on that. Because remember, that is how we're funded by FTS. Okay, so this is the part where I'd like those of you that would take the challenge. This is the Jeopardy! challenge. Um, let's put it all together. So if you go to the next slide, I'd like for you just to take a, a little time. I've given you all of the information you need. I even put it on this slide. I'd like for you to compute what would be a department's productivity. And this is the type of data that I encourage the vice presidents to use when they were determining the different factors to be considered when cutting classes. I never advocated that you do and across the board. You can do that. That is your option. That is the college's decision. I empowered them to make their own decisions. But I tend to feel that when you look at multiple factors, not just one, you come up with a better, a better um, document and you come up with a better product at the end. So, um, in the example that I'm giving you, thirty students, five hours, what would be the FTS and what would be the FTF? And the same thing for forty students at three hours and the same for sixty-two students at four hours.
Chancellor Jackson, um, Trustee Gonzalez-Juan has his hand up.
Go ahead. Uh, uh, I was gonna do the Jeopardy! song, but I'll, I'll, I'll go ahead and take your question.
I was waiting for the Jeopardy! song.
All right. Can you hit the button again, Mayisha? Hit the button again, Mayisha. And hit the next slide, Mayisha, and I will take your question, trustee Ewing.
Okay. I'm not gonna answer the math question. Because there is a math question there and, and I'm sure there's, you know, there's an answer, but here's my, I wanna come back to the question of.
Right, the math question right now. You don't wanna answer that?
No, no, I, I wanna ask a question about why we're asking math question. So I understand that seventy percent of our funding is based on student enrollment, but since seats. Okay, and so I'm not discounting the importance of that. When we're in the whole harmless period, that act, that number is actually sort of irrelevant. And I think especially during the pandemic, as we have understood that kinda all bets are off. And we have a, an, a mission to, to, to serve and the state is saying, look, we understand your mission's gonna be hard to fulfill. Under these conditions, we're gonna give you the money anyway, regardless of your enrollment. So we could have zero students and we'd still get the funding. But let's say we go to a normal year where we're not being held harmless. And in fact, productivity is seventy percent of our funding. FTS is seventy percent of our funding. You said seventeen point five is the standard level. But it's just a, a standard that somebody came up with at some point. In our district, we have a particular cost structure. We have a particular overhead structure. There's some fixed costs. Because we've got four campuses, those fixed costs are bigger than a district, maybe that has two campuses, et cetera. Here's my real question, though. Who in the district is doing the calculation that says here, in fact, is our actual fixed cost? So that when we go to offer a class, we know that the cost of instruction is gonna be X dollars. We can calculate that really clearly and easily. Especially as we look at a particular instructor, we go, we're gonna pay that instructor X amount of dollars, X amount of benefit. Okay, now. Then there's additional costs. That's our fixed costs. Who in the district is responsible for calculating that? So that we know what, in fact, we need to make as an average benchmark of productivity. That's on the productivity side. And then how are we figuring in the other SCIF factors when we figure out what classes we're gonna offer? If we say, we're gonna cut this class if it doesn't meet twenty-five, two weeks before the quarter. What if that particular class has a cohort of students who we get more money for because they fall into SCIF, you know, SCIF categories? So I, I'm just wondering, where is that calculation being done? And, and when are we going to validate the productivity number that we are using? We're saying our goal is seventeen point five, but it seems to me, in the entire time I've been here, I've never seen anybody say, this is our actual cost. And so when we get, say, we get to the spring quarter, we spent all of the fixed costs already. Like, we can't do anything about that. Those are baked in. Now we've got three or four, or let's say a hundred marginal sections. They're not, they're not super productive. Maybe they're, they've got twenty students, but we're in the spring quarter. We already spent all the money that took us to get to the spring quarter. We can't do anything about those. But we could earn a little bit of money if we offered a section that paid for the instructor. And then maybe a bit more. Or maybe we just break even. Because there's nothing we could do about those other fixed costs. So what I'm trying to figure out is when are we doing the actual analysis of our costs at Peralta? And not somebody else's arbitrary seventeen point five?
Okay, let me try to give you an answer. It, it's not a, it's not a, it's not an easy answer. I believe that we were incapable of doing that prior to going live four days ago. In, in capable. Because we do not have the manpower or the resources to get out the stubby pencil to be able to do those calculations. And those calculations were not in a form that we could pull out of the system to help us. And in fact, even to do our projections for the budget for the last, well, since I've been here, I've only been here one cycle. I will tell you the amount of manpower that it took to bring to the board the recommendations for hires last year. Because of two people working over the weekend, overtime, eleven and twelve hours a day. Putting things and downloading them from the system into a spreadsheet. Manipulating that spreadsheet so that it looked nice and pretty and not with percentages and, you know, fairy characters that are in there. And then being able to turn around and present that to the presidents and to present that to the vice presidents. And then for us to present that to you with our recommendations for next year, probably took us about eighty to a hundred man-hours. And that was just, just for faculty positions and academic and instructional positions for, for last year. Yep. So we just went live. And so one of the things that you heard from CM at the last board meeting when he talked about uh, budget allocation model, and now we're calling it our resource allocation model and our budget philosophy. And you've heard me say this, I know people have. I said, we have the end. We, we kinda did it backwards, but you know, whatever. We have the end. We know how we wanna allocate things based upon the SCIF funding. We came up with a budget philosophy that so far, I haven't had a lot of feedback saying that it's not accurate. And everything in the middle is missing.
Okay, so if I can just, then just, here's the conclusion that I'm coming to. That we're flying a little bit blind. And, and so, well, so, but here's the challenge for me as a trustee, kinda looking at this. Like, I have to trust you all to do this, but what, what I'm hearing is that you're operating on a theory that's not been validated by any actual numbers. And what I'm hearing is.
Since I've been here, I, I can only say that. I don't know what happened before. I can't speak to the.
Believe me, they've never been presented to us.
Okay.
And, and so President Shinozki is saying, and other faculty members have said, look, you're cutting these classes that could be making us money. You've got a number on productivity that you're going on, but that number's never been validated. And, and in the meanwhile, we know we're losing product, we know we're losing enrollment. We may be losing enrollment because we're cutting sections.
Well, I will.
Might be cutting sections that could be profitable, but we don't know that because we don't know what it costs us to run a section.
We, we do know what it costs to run a section. We know what that cost is. And I have three individuals from the campuses. And I'll start with, um, Doctor Bajrami. And then the second hand I saw was also College of Alameda, um, Doctor Johnson or Jones, excuse me. And then, uh, Doctor Besikov.
And Chancellor, I just wanna make sure that, uh, because I, I know that this is an important question, Nikki, and it definitely is. However, we also have, I mean, I think that there is, we're just at the very beginning of the presentation and this question is coming in. So, um, Chancellor, I, I also want to ensure that we're able to get through what we need to get through, but certainly loop back to this because this is clearly.
We can loop back to this.
It's up to you. You decide where to do.
No, we can, we can address it. We can address it later on. Um, because, um, we do know there are some fixed costs. We know what faculty, what it costs to teach a class. We know that. That's not a, I don't need to run a, you know, a survey to do that. And I believe that Doctor Bajrami is up next. And she will speak to some of the things that the colleges did. But I will tell you, I don't believe, and maybe I'm wrong, vice presidents, that we were cutting classes that had twenty-five students in them. So, um, and I'm seeing my, my presidents validate that. And we can provide that information if necessary to show that to be true. So, um, I believe the next slide is yours, Doctor Bajrami, um, to talk about.
Going to give us the answer to the questions here?
The answers were up. They were on the last line.
Okay, we were gonna wait, um, President Besikov and President Jones, just so we can get through it. This is just talking about enrollment management and the citation is from the, um, the book that I provided to you. Uh, but really, enrollment management is a strategy, bottom line. And it's a tool for us to have discussions. There is no, you know, seventeen point five is the gospel truth. And no matter what, we have changed that within this district while I was here for career and technical education. But that was in two thousand and eight. We're in twenty twenty-two now. So yes, we do need to have those discussions. But we also need to keep going while we have those discussions. So, um, with that, I'll turn it over to Doctor Bajrami to talk about what's going on in the campuses. And then we can also, um, try to address those questions at the end if we have time. So Diana?
All right.
Next slide, please. Next slide. And I'll turn it over to you.
All right. So more numbers here, but I'll stop in some important points here. The narrative that this spiral, the down spiral in enrollment occurs because we cutting suck, the sections is not supported by numbers. And let me give you one fact. And I have a bunch of numbers in front of me, but one number that speaks for itself. Two thousand twenty, twenty-one academic year. And twenty-one, twenty-two academic year, we did zero cuts on FTF, zero, a thousand, a thousand. Meanwhile, the FTS dropped significantly, thirteen to fourteen percent. And we're talking actual numbers with some projection and against actual numbers. The narrative that we canceling classes at twenty-five, that's not true. In these days, we'd dream to have a class with twenty-five. What we did is because of this spiral of low enrollment, not only in Peralta, all over community colleges. The district and the VPIs, we got together and we said, we got to create different entry point for those students. So we don't cancel that class, we push it back. So we don't lose those students. We place those students in another class. And if there was not a class at COA, I reached, uh, Doctor Richardson or Doctor Hay or Doctor Obsata to accommodate these students. But let's go back to the process, how the process is. Um, I've been at Peralta for a long time. I've been part of BUM. I've been part of a task force when I had fourteen, fifteen percent cuts during the Great Recession. I'm an econ faculty here. I love numbers. And usually I turn to numbers to address some of. And usually I turn to numbers to address some of the issues. The projection for current year twenty one twenty two was twelve thousand one hundred. We did not meet that projection and that's not unusual. We have not met the projections year after year since seventeen eighteen with major percentage change reduction from actuals to projection. The actual right now, and I check the data right now, is eleven thousand four hundred eighty one below the projection, we might have some more number coming from C O A with spring intercession. But we still not going to hit that number because the best we can do is probably sixty F T S. So when this was presented to the executive team by the president, this is a presentation that was given to the executive team at the district. Chancellor, at that time Vice Chancellor Brown shared with us. They said, okay, these are the numbers if we talk about three year rolling average in this BUM that we created that definitely need revisiting, but we spent so much time and so many hours in meetings to come up with that. If we went by the numbers and by a model that we all had agreed, the actual F T F district wide would have been seven hundred sixty eight point twenty five. Let's say seven sixty eight. A significant drop from a thousand that we have in current year. And that drop, applying the same three year rolling averages would have meant twenty five percent cut for Alameda, twenty two for B C C, twenty five for Lenny, twenty for Merit. But because, you know, we are in hold harmless. What the district did and presented to all of us said, you know, we cannot function as a community, we can serve students well with this major cut. So what we're going to do, if you can go in next slide. We're going to lift that target. So if you remember the target, we're going to sixteen thousand now. So that's sixteen thousand, let me, you know, the sixteen thousand we reached in nineteen twenty. Eleven four eight one this year. So lifting the target saying, okay, we, we can survive that major cut. But we're going to lift it. And that means that we're going to have overall allocation from seven sixty eight to nine twenty. And those reductions in the right hand side, so this severe reduction here, twenty five for Alameda, I'll look at nine point six, I rounded here. Twenty two, a little bit less, you know, Alameda. And you know, the V P I's and the president would advocate it to the district and always said, it appears to us that career education heavy colleges probably are getting more heat, but all these percentages were padded in that formula. And seven percent cut is much better than twenty two percent cut. Now the next slide. Why cut? I'm an econ major. Why cut? Because we cutting classes with zero students. We have zero movement and we monitoring those classes closely. We have classes with two students and yes, we can calculate it. That is a major loss and marginal revenue, marginal cost analysis. It has a big question mark there unless a business has to shut down. Now, we know the business, we're not going to go in that detailed cost analysis. But some of the numbers here, we have had a reduction of thirty eight percent from seventeen eighteen to now in F T S. And the reduction in F T F is nowhere compared to that. What do we do at the college level? It is tough. Every time you have a cut, it is tough. These are fellow faculty, we have worked along them for twenty thirty years, these are students, you know, that need us. We analyze at C O A and I touch base with all my, I call them my sister V P I's. There is a similar process in each college. We got this data, analyze the data. The chancellor and the vice chancellor gave us some clear criteria, what do we do? We had some resolutions from our senate. We're going to keep that away from students completing a decree certificate. We're going to respect the contractual agreement because there are some F T F that we have to meet no matter what. We're going to respect, you know, completion on time, we're going to respect the C. So at C O A, with the help of our director of research and planning, we provide a detailed analysis to see where do we make the cut and stay the college we want to stay. Really detailed analysis back and forth, we discussed it with the chairs per our integrated budget planning model. First draft, had the discussion, we made the revision, second half draft, more discussion, more revisions. We even did not distribute to F T F to make sure that if we didn't get it right, we'll go into all the program maps, we're going to go in guided pathways. And we make those adjustments, we present it to the senate, you know, we got to cut, everybody gets to cut. You know, contract cost, our community colleges are cutting and they have much better productivity. When we talk about productivity seventeen point five, we haven't reached that productivity in a long time. Thirteen point eight last year. This year, the best college is Merit at twelve point six something, let's round it at thirteen. If we look at productivity, those cuts will be drastic. And to address some questions, we do not cut classes with twenty five students. The deans and especially the scheduler and classified professionals are working around the clock to keep any students unharmed from this cut. We created the regular courses, fourteen week courses, ten week courses, eight week courses. And in the world of community colleges, we always lose apportionment when we go with shorter term classes. And this is where we have to advocate probably to the state office to find out a little bit better now for being flexible and nimble in providing services. And even then, we do a cost benefit analysis and so are we losing some portionment for these classes, but we gaining some from students. And, you know, and we're working with marketing team, really hard work going there. I think it's time for us to come together and talk about how do we become more flexible? How do we project into the future, you know, with Alameda County? Drastic drop in K twelve, they are forty two percent of our enrollment and our students with a drastic drop and demographic changes. You know, what do we do ahead? I think, you know, it's time for us to put our minds together. We know the cost every, each of us with the help of schedule and we can do the cost really quickly. If you have a, you know, a five hour class there, you know, you know, the cost will go in over twelve thousand dollars. If it's especially as a part time with no other full time employment. And the actual apportionment we get cannot even be compared, even with cost, with, with the, you know, fixed cost taken in consideration, but definitely we need better, better better tools and properly we need even better tools to project some of the enrollment, where is it? Meet students, where they at? And innovate our curriculum. So this is what we did at C O A and somebody asked about SCIF. And I think Alameda is proud because we working ahead in the formula of allocating the funds after we meet the contractual agreement of all full time faculty, a small percentage of F T F left. We tried to project based on the SCIF, we pull a very good formula, twenty percent and ten percent both in equity and student success and seventy percent on F T S. And we're individually of each chair to dig into the data. We provide all that information to the chairs to see the student success rate. A lot of work is done and, and you know, I've never seen, I've been in Peralta for a long time. I've never seen people work so hard to make sure that we meet the students who are eighth and we keep those classes full. But a little bit of fact, we have springer intercept, spring intercession coming ahead at C O A, we'll start at the end of May. We have been promoting it, we have posted on Canvas dashboard for students. We have even engaged in pay marketing. We have posted everywhere we can post, we participating in on our weekends to reach to community to say we have courses. And you have courses with zero students, two students, three students despite our efforts. So we got to explore, what is the demand, what do we need for the future? Can we have a demand supply issue here? You know, we offering a little bit more than demand is there. What happened with this engagement? So be involved in pedagogy and other things, a lot of work to be done. It is a complex issue. I've been in education for thirty years, I haven't seen this situation. Could it be the tight labor market? That brings less student out, the tightest labor market in fifty years. Mental health issues, some disconnect, you know, there are a lot of reasons. But again, is I, I, the numbers do not support that cutting in F T F has resulted in less F T S.
Thank you, Dr. Basirami. Mark, I believe you're up next and then we'll end with our, we're gonna hold questions, I think, and so we can get through the marketing and you told me seven minutes, Mark.
Thank you, Chancellor. Good evening, board. As you've heard, I've got seven minutes to talk about all of our marketing plans for next year. So I'm gonna go very quickly. Next slide, please. I want to start with a slide taken from Dr. Jim Black of S E M Works, who we had the privilege of working with just a little bit over a year ago. He came in and kind of looked at a stem to stern analysis of what Peralta was doing in terms of strategic enrollment management. And he gave us a bunch of recommendations. This slide in particular, I want to call your attention to, and that's that marketing is just one little word in the pre enrollment column. And my takeaway from this slide is that marketing and advertising is not a panacea. We all have to work together if we want to improve our enrollment situation. As, as Chancellor Jackson said, I think the spirit of Ubuntu is really important for us to come together and help serve our students. Next slide, please. So looking back, I started not quite three years ago. And when I started, I realized that we had some real technology deficits in terms of our marketing and promotional activities. So we've, we've been very effective at changing that. We introduced HubSpot Marketing Hub for email communication tools, which allows us to personalize messages with students. We launched that in March twenty twenty. We added SMS app for texting students. And that also is more of an interactive tool. And we can, it's, it, it functions in collaboration with HubSpot so that we can take advantage of HubSpot's automation features. We email somebody, they don't visit a webpage, we then text them a follow up message. That automation has been used by the colleges and it's been very effective. Lastly, I want to point out that we added the HubSpot content management system in March of twenty twenty one. And that's allowed us to build the brand new website. Next slide, please. And our new website as launched at the end of February, Google is indexing it now. We will decommission the old site shortly. This is a really important improvement for the district because this is mobile optimized. As you can see from the illustration there, it works great on phones and tablets. And it's also A D A compliant, which our old site was not. Next slide, please. So we've made some real technology improvements to put the pieces in place. So now I want to talk about our campaign activity. When, if you look at the functional maps, district marketing is a, is a service center for the colleges. We provide software tools to allow the colleges to communicate with students more effectively. And in terms of advertising, we've provided some high level awareness advertising at the college brand level. We've done some data that suggests that when it comes to enrollment marketing, the college brands pull so much better than the Peralta brand. So in twenty twenty one, we did videos and banner ads, we did social media ads, we did bus ads, we did house ads with Google search. We did postcard to everybody in our service area. And we did an ongoing campaign of emailing students who had applied but not yet enrolled using the C C C apply process. And next slide, please. The result is that with all of these activities, we were able to drive sixteen thousand people to the top of our funnel. Sixteen thousand people to the landing page, knowing that those are prospects that we can engage and hopefully turn into students. Next slide, please. We learned a lot of valuable lessons in spring or in fall of twenty one and we applied those in spring of twenty two. We did much of the same activity as far as videos and banner ads, social media over the top is, which is like television ads, but that run on web services. House ads through Google, postcards again, C C C apply again. Our colleagues at College of Alameda saw what the district was doing with the College of Alameda branded ads and gave us some extra money for videos and banners and YouTube ads, ads. And I want to thank the Board of Trustees for approving those at our January meeting. That helped us to really help push C O A in a, in a much more significant way. And if you go to the next slide, the overall campaigns resulted in over thirty six thousand page visits to the landing page that all of our different ads were pointing to. So this tells us a couple of things. One is that the college branding ads work to drive traffic more so than the Peralta branded ads. And, and that our digital advertising is working to get people into the top of the funnel to turn them into students. There's still a lot of work that needs to be done though, so. Well, let's see, let me show you some of those examples. Next slide, please. This is just a, I wanted to include the links to the videos. This is specific for College of Alameda, but we created videos for college branded videos for each of the four campuses. Next slide. We created banners in all kinds of shapes and sizes which ran through the Google network. It ran through the Bay Area News Group rec network. And we also ran them on social media networks, including Facebook, Instagram, Snapchat and, and other social media outlets. Next slide, please. Here's an example of the postcard that we sent. Next slide, please. And the bus ad that ran in the fall. Next slide, please. So looking forward, we're going to continue at the district level to support the colleges with college branded enrollment advertising. Oh, as part of our work with A C C J C, we worked on the functional maps. And we kind of spelled out with the role of the district. We view the district marketing team as a providing tools and services for the colleges. We're not doing all of the advertising for the colleges. We're providing additional advertising support to give a baseline of the college brand awareness to the colleges. And we're going to continue to do that and we'd love to keep that going. Chancellor Jackson hosted a meeting on March thirtieth with the deans of our career and technical education programs. And, and I had the pleasure of being a fly on the wall in that meeting and it was awesome. We, we really believe that promoting our C T E programs, which tend to be in person, will get students back on the campuses and that those students then become more likely to take their math or their English requirement classes in addition to those C T E classes, which should have a not a positive impact on enrollment. Dual enrollment has been a bright sign of success for us, even during the declining enrollments elsewhere. Dual enrollment has increased and we're going to continue to push that as in our promotional activities. We've created some strategic partnerships that aren't, aren't just scholarships, but also help drive curriculum. Some of those recent partnerships are PepsiCo Foundation and a hundred thousand trees for humanity, which involves greening of our campuses, but also creating course curriculum at the colleges to help prepare our students for green economy jobs. In terms of college and district collaboration, I host a monthly meeting with the colleges to help align our communication, particularly with students. We call it the student communication meeting. It started with me and the public information officers, and then it grew to include the web content developers. And then it grew to include the directors of campus life and student activities. And now I'm, I'm really pleased that the deans of enrollment from all of the campuses are also participating in this meeting now. So that's our student in communication meetings. For advertising for fall, at the last student communication meeting, we talked about our plans for advertising in fall. Our colleagues at Laney College expressed interest in, in kind of collaborating with the district on some campaign or some media buys, College of Alameda expressed interest in buying again. That's really important for us and it's great for the taxpayers. Because when we centralize our buying power, that dollar goes far, it buys more impressions, it reaches more prospective students to help bring in people to our campuses. And the last point I'll make is that I'm really excited about the people. And the last point I'll make is that I'm really excited about the PeopleSoft nine point two phase two process that we have underway right now. That Chancellor Jackson mentioned, phase three of that program will be revisiting campus solutions. Um in particularly the in uh enrollment workflow piece. And Antoine and um uh Maile and I have talked about that. We were both really looking forward to that because that, we hope, as part of that upgrade, it'll make the the process of enrollment easier for students. And also it'll give us more transparency in terms of we drive students to our websites. They go into C C C apply, they enroll. Um that that'll help help us understand more effectively the efficacy of our campaigns. With that, I thank you for your time and attention and I'll turn it over to Dr. Herrera.
So um Dr. Droker, would would you like to start or what? Just a little brief introduction and then we could go through the student survey?
Yeah, it it would be my pleasure, Chancellor. Uh I do want to introduce Dr. Fran Cisco Herrera, who's been serving since uh June of twenty twenty one as our institutional researcher. He's our Associate Vice Chancellor. Uh formerly, he was the Director of Strategic Planning and Assessment at U C Berkeley. He has also served as the Director of Institutional Research at Holy Name University, as well as Loyola Marymount University. He received his PhD and master's degrees from UCLA. And so he comes with a wealth of knowledge and I call him Statistic-y. So um Dr. Herrera, we we look forward to hearing from you on this data. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Droker, and uh thank you, Chancellor, Trustees and guests, uh for this opportunity to kind of just share the results uh from our student survey um that we did um uh just earlier in the spring semester. We did this survey. It was open for about three weeks and the purpose of this survey was really to kind of get students feedback about what their preferences um for instruction um for the upcoming summer and fall and as well as to get their feedback on um what was occurring uh for spring uh for this semester. So um I can go ahead and uh share my screen, I guess, with the, see if I can pull up my presentation. See, here we go. So just to begin a summary of uh some of the findings, um we had approximately about si- over sixteen hundred students who um, you know, respond, took the survey, uh which is around nine percent, uh which was actually really good. Uh many of the surveys in the past have been around two percent of the student uh population. So um I was quite pleased that we actually also got good representation from each of the colleges, uh which was very um important for us. And what we found was that for the most part, uh the vast majority of students were happy with the class offerings uh for spring semester. Um you can see um a very small percentage who were dissatisfied. Um and we also asked students, um you know, as we were expecting to more fully open um classes for in-person offerings in the summer and the fall, um we found that over half of the students indicated that they still preferred a a lot of online instruction. And to get a little bit more detailed about um those courses, uh we found that uh science, business, language classes um were a preferred online um compared to uh career education or sport programs. Those obviously were um people more interested in in those um in-person. Uh other findings that we found was uh we did look at sort of a correlation of our students and their commute preferences. We saw that for the most part, um not surprisingly, the more longer commute times that you had, the more likely you wanted um online instruction versus if you had a short, of course, you'd want you know, you were let more preferred for in-person. And then um we also looked at different subgroups, uh for example, students who required accommodations. So they had um, you know, a higher preference uh for online instruction uh versus in-person. And then we also asked um things such as preferable time of courses uh for students. And um we found that again, for the most part, uh Monday through Thursday, Thursday daytime classes were often preferred, although there was still a good um amount of evening and weekend classes uh that students requested. Um and then one last quick finding that we had that I want to talk about is we asked about students uh safety perception on the colleges. We asked this because as we started to reopen and offer more in-person um classes, uh we wanted to get a sense of uh how students felt about returning to campus. And in some case, so we, I'll go into more detail later in the presentation about um how students felt about that. Um so let's talk about uh class offerings. Again, in this slide, we can see that um a good amount of the students still prefer online. You know, there, you know, they're still prefer online. Uh very few students, as you can see here, are dissatisfied uh with the classes that we offered for spring. Only eight percent said they were dissatisfied. So that's, you know, we were happy to see that, you know, students are happy with what we are currently offering uh this semester. Um we also wanted to know a little bit more about their preferred mode of instruction. Um so we did this breakdown to really better understand um what types of modalities they were interested. So we wanted to break it down on between online, hybrid, in-person, as well as whether that was asynchronous online or synchronous. Uh and so what this chart really highlights and and you can see these numbers and percentages here for both summer and fall, again, more than half students are still saying that they really prefer online learning, whether that's asynchronous or synchronous. So um and that's, there's not much of a change between summer and fall. Um students are still hoping, it seems like they are preferring to help take online courses this summer and and next fall. Uh what we also wanted to do and one of the intentions of this survey was also to help inform um as we're building the schedule to kind of know what exactly what kind of courses um students were most interested and the modality of that. And so again, what this chart here is representing is it's kind of showing where courses specifically students' preferences for online versus in-person. Um here you can see um these are the courses like career education, sports programs. These were the courses that obviously um these are students that the students preferred that they be in-person, um which is not too surprising. And on the reverse, on this slide, we see these are the courses in science, in business, in language, for example, that students still prefer online. So they're still hoping that these courses are online. Um there there is a good preference, at least from the respondents uh who took the survey. Um here also, we see classes with labs and group work. Um we see some somewhat mixed, but we do still see uh a good number of of respondents wanting these courses online, uh but also some in-person, which also includes uh hybrid modalities. And again, here's more of a breakdown of showing um exactly what other kind of courses um students are preferring. And here, we have a good amount of students wanting both online and in-person. So that's definitely something we want to take in into consideration that we're still offering online as well as in-person, having those options. Um in this slide, we really wanted to just again, it's just going deeper into the correlation between preference of in-person and commute times uh of students. And as we can see here in this, you can see um as the commute uh becomes longer, students have a higher preference uh for that be online, um which is not too surprising. Um obviously, if you have a shorter commute, um having classes in person isn't um as big of a challenge, I would imagine, as if it was a longer commute. Uh again, we, as I mentioned, we wanted to get feedback from our students who are in need of accessibility and medical accommodations. And here we're seeing, we asked them what their preferences were on a five-point scale. And again, there's a slightly higher pre- preference for online, both synchronous and asynchronous um compared to in-person um modalities. Um also, in this chart, we also wanted to look at students' preferences in terms of time of classes. And so um when we ask students about what they want for summer and fall, um again, sixty-five percent here are showing that they prefer um that Monday through Thursday with a higher preference in this map, in the darker shades, you'll see there's that preference for morning before noon, had the highest um choices by students. Um although you can see overall um that weekday preference um is a much higher. Um however, I do still want to say that we did have a lot of mentions from students about twenty-two percent saying that, you know, we still, there is a need for those evening classes after five P M and as well as those Saturday classes. Um so students are still indicating that uh those are still um needed. And again, as I mentioned, we wanted to talk about a little bit about campus security, how students were feeling as they return. And in this bar chart, you can kind of see here that for the most part, more than half of students, the the vast majority do feel safe um across all four colleges. Um there's only a s- very small percentage of students who are saying they felt somewhat unsafe. Um and particularly the highest among those were at at Laney College. And to better understand that, um we kind of thought about what in the environments, where specifically did students feel uh somewhat unsafe. And so in this chart here, what we're seeing that um it was really, students mentioned a lot about in the buildings, in parking lots, walkways. Um those particularly were areas um where students felt somewhat of uh somewhat uns- unsafe. And I can say from looking at the qualitative data, which we are still in the process of evaluating the open-ended responses for students. It's mainly, it was, most of the mentions say it was more feeling unsafe at night, um in evening and and nighttime is where some of these mentions um were made by uh students. And so just to wrap up, um I'll talk a little bit more about the demographics of the respondents. Um about half of our respondents were below thirty years of age, though we did get respondents from a various wide range of ages. As you can see here, um more than half of our respondents were female, um male or other identified um as not male or female. And in terms of key racial representation, um you can see here that um we had a good representation um in terms of ethnicity um across our survey respondents. So and then, oh yeah, I think I believe that's it. So I'll stop share there and um thank you so much.
So I believe if there are any questions or there were hands up to, I think, address the question that trustee Ewing had. Um I see President Besikov's hand and I see, I think Nathaniel was first, I'm sorry, Rudy, um and then uh President Besikov.
Thank you very much, Chancellor. Um trustee Ewan, um I can um speak a little bit to the issue of um a detailed cost analysis um by F T S. That I came from a district that did that and it took us over a year and a half to to do that work and it was substantial um to create on a cost per F T S basis for every single program across a multi-college district. And it is not an easy undertaking um to do, but it's possible. And um I think that it would be beneficial to perhaps look at doing that um at the Peralta Community Colleges. The other thing that I would um say is based on the fact that our funding is based on a productivity of seventeen and a half. What the intent is, is that on average, we should be providing uh instruction with a student-to-faculty ratio of seventeen point five. It's not to say that that should be the uh productivity or student-to-faculty ratio for every single course, but on average, that is the target that we need to do. And anytime that we fall below that, we are falling below the funding level that we are receiving, at least on the seventy percent, that is attributable to the student-centered funding formula. So I don't think that that's arbitrary at all. It is based on the way in which we are receiving state funding. So I'll stop there. Thank you.
Uh yes, um just wanted to uh check in on a couple of things and I I'll I'll go back to the previous uh discussion that Dr. Jones touched on, but I first would like to say that uh just with our return to campus and just the vastness of our college. Certainly, you know, we have had some safety concerns, but I would also like to say at the same time that we are working to uh to really mitigate those issues and uh certainly uh Director Timothy Thomas um with District-wide Campus Security uh has been, has been very helpful in in providing extra attention to our parking lot as we recognize it's an issue. Um we've also identified uh the state of the parking lot is something that is important. So we're also looking at uh especially post-flea market, uh making sure that that it is, it it is a clean approachable place uh as we move forward. And then um on top, chief thing that I really would like to appreciate of uh Director Thomas is that um we've uh had implemented a program working in concert with Marina Security to provide safety escorts uh to 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 the parking lot, to vehicles uh and 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 to other parts of campus. So uh just wanted to provide that bit of insight um just in terms of how we're addressing our safety issues at Laney. Um speaking to um what Dr. Jones said about uh just in terms of trustee Gonzalez U N's question about what is the actual cost. Um certainly, uh dating back to I even three pa- three past lives ago, in my case, it's a question that on a campus level um has always been looked at. And um this, this is included as recently as as a couple of years ago on my campus, working with our campus researcher and our then-Vice President Badman Services. And I'm about to provide some rough numbers, but they've been pretty consistent with my two previous districts. Um if you looked at the, what Chancellor Jackson showed as far as the um F T S and what they produce based on numbers of students. Um even taking it out of F T S, I can go on numbers of students. What what we, what I found in my experience is if you have somewhere between twelve and fourteen students in a lecture class, uh typically, that's going to be enough to pay a salary of an instructor. If if that number gets to like eighteen or nineteen, that maybe starts to be a number where you you can pay the salaries plus the benefits. Of course, a college is not just, uh although faculty are very important and um that they're not the only thing that 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 they're not the, that's not the only cost of the campus. Are you going to have the lights on? Are you going to pay uh other employees who serve students? Well, to get to that number, my experience has been, and again, I'm speaking in generalities here, that that number gets around, say, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight to kind of do the skeleton crew, if you will. So then um if if what are you going to do to have better staffing? That's where you get to a number of thirty-five, perhaps. And then where do you get to a point where you can prosper, where you can grow, where you can do things? And and that's where you you start to exceed forty or four point oh F T S per class. And that's, if you think point one students uh or point one F T S, one student, that's kind of where it goes. And and that's really kind of the escalator. And again, I'm speaking in generalities here, but that's kind of one way to look at it as you move forward. Um one other consideration that I just want to put out that, and this is very important because of the of the needs of our students. Um not all students need lecture-only classes. Uh not on, not all students need a class that runs a whole semester. Uh you know, a lot of our students are working, they want to attend part-time. You know, a lot of our students are working, they want to attend part time, things like that. And that's where your late start classes and your online classes come into play. And the way those are funded are different than what you saw. And it's slightly less, it goes from what's called weekly scheduled class hours to daily scheduled class hours. Then if you have your students who maybe take non credit, that that funding, that that funding goes down a little bit. And so if you look at the spectrum of needs of our students, part of our planning is understanding that and offering courses that meet their needs, but also understanding the F T S that'll produce, not so much to say the money that we'll make, but to show the capacity of what we can do in the future. So I hope that provides some context. Oh, and one other thing real quick. One of the greatest needs of our students, especially at Laney College, is to have access to classes with labs. And in terms of how labs pay, that's also different than say, just a straight lecture class. So I just wanted also provide that for information.
We don't have a lot of time. It's six fifty five, and I think we were supposed to end at six today, but I have to tell you that this is, this has been such an important conversation. So first of all, I have to say thank you to Dr. Schnaski. Thank you, Chancellor. Thank you for all of our administrators who made this happen because I see this as the beginning of a conversation, the beginning of a dialogue, the beginning of transformations and changes that frankly, we we probably need to engage in and and start talking about and start planning. Vice President Basrami's presentation was particularly particularly resonated with me, I think, for a couple of different reasons. And these don't need to be answered today, but I think in in our next iteration or our next episode of this, we can delve deeply more incrementally as we go forward. And so here are some of the practical realities that that I'm taking away today. And one of the practical realities is our enrollment will not go back to where we were. That is just the reality. Our K through twelve, not just in California, but across the country, and everybody is talking about that, has declined so much for so many different reasons that we will never get back to where we were. And and our, and our enrollment strategies need to get better, our marketing strategies need to get better, and they need to become much more effective. However, we're not going to be able to get to where we were. So that's a practical reality that we need to really keep in mind. The other thing that I, that is a takeaway is the productivity of seventeen point five has been a standard. And this is a conversation, I think, that at the state level people are even having, and at the Fed level, they're kind of talking about this too as well as our lobbyist had said, where, how do we get the extra funding for all of the students that we're not going to get back? And so seventeen point five, the idea of thirty five students in each classroom seems hard to take. But at the same time, there's also a financial reality to that, which I think the Chancellor and President Besikov and a few other people have spoken to is there's got to be a way to keep our institutions running. But as it relates to seventeen point five, and here's the question that we're not going to talk about today because we don't have time and we need to think about is we have not for the past X years ever met seventeen point five. And that is a definition of insanity, doing something over and over and over again and not really changing, even though it's not working. So we need to start having the conversations as to, you know, what does that mean? Are there shifts? But also, what are the ramifications for not meeting it yearly? And what are the financial and other ramifications for even trying to shift that down? So those are those hard conversations. And I think another thing that's undergirding the the questions I'm seeing in the chat, the the public comments I've heard in the past and and also this presentation is, I think that the question is, you know, why is there still costs increasing in terms of administrative hire and at the district level? We've just been through COVID. There have been many things that we have had to pay for or that cares and her funds have had to pay for that we've never experienced before. But I also do think that much of what we're doing is we're shifting, we're progressing in our district organization. That's changing, it's happening. And then we're also moving forward in terms of our functional map. So this is not the end of the story. We're in that process, but I'll give it to you, Dr. Jackson. Those were some of my takeaways.
Well, thank you. You you said it so well. Trustee President Reese, that is exactly it. Once you, first thing you have to do is to recognize the problem before you can actually start to to address that problem. I think this was the beginning. I I did, you might have seen me looking down because I got a text from C M who made the presentation about our phase two of going forward with our budget allocation, integrated planning and budget model. And he told me to tell you, I'm reading it. Please let the board know that the district is balancing the budget by using hold harmless dollars. There is no separate pot of money, F Y I. And that is absolutely true. If we had spent all of the hold harmless dollars, we would have been in a negative balance. And we all know what that means. That means the state coming in, taking us under their wings and telling us what to do. It means that we probably would be at show cause right now rather than being on warning. So there are ramifications. It's not pretty. I know people don't like the term, but it, when you talk about balancing, it is a vital tool that we have to use. Now, can we make a change to that? Can we look at changing the F T S? Can changing the productivity figure or the enrollment numbers? Absolutely. But with that, there are going to be some hard choices that we have to make because they have budgetary implications. So if we just start backwards and say, okay, we have this many full time faculty, we have this many full time staff, we have this many administrators, what are those total costs? And like trustee Ewing said, we haven't done that. We haven't done that analysis. We haven't had the tools to be able to do it other than stubby pencils and spreadsheets. So I'm hoping with this new implementation of phase two, which we have some issues that I'm calling a meeting on Monday to have an open forum to discuss. It's not going to be, you know, smooth sailing. There's going to be some bumps, not insurmountable, but just means that we've got to make some changes. But I do think that we are at least acknowledging that we need to address the issues. That's the first step. And I don't think that has been done in a long time. And so this next year, working with C M, which is why I read his message because he can't get in, he said he can't get in to make that comment. So I wanted to share that with the board. And I will turn it over back to you, President Reese, and I do see that trustee Ewing's hand is up.
Nikki.
Thank you. Gosh, I really appreciate all the work that went into the various presentations and the responses. And I'm just really glad that we're actually having this conversation. It's really clear, you know, I I think all of us have understood and Dr. Basrami just said real explicitly, we're not making seventeen point five, we haven't done that forever. So why don't we just get rid of that number? Come back to reality and then have a non defended, non provocative discussion about what we're really doing. And then the other thing that I think we really need to do here in this con, in on the discussion about student success is actually now begin to look at what are the capacity of the students. Dr. Arera, I really appreciated the 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 data dump here. And I think one of the things that we need to do when we start looking at online, it's various modes. Here's a basic question. How much time are students spending investing in their own learning? And what is their capacity to do that? Because my experience is, is that a lot of students who are going online think that they don't have to put in the, if let's say it's a three unit online class, they don't have to put in that baseline three hours to begin with. And now they're starting from scratch. And because there's no face to face accountability, their input for study time on a three unit class might be as little as two hours, three hours, and they're not learning very much. So I think if we don't understand that end of it and what's going on in student lives, we're just setting ourselves up for failure. We're going to do issue a lot of degrees and issue grades, but we won't be really educating anybody. I think the main thing that I want to try to do, and I'll try to do this for myself, is try to just be kind of more open and accepting that this is where we are and kind of start from scratch. No judgment. Let's just see how we can make this work. And and what I really appreciate is that we are sharing data and then saying, is that data correct? Is it not correct? Anyway, thanks for doing this. I look forward to more.
And one, one last comment from the audience. C M is still looking. He said, please tell the board that your district student success numbers are improving year after year since seventeen eighteen. And that was something that we presented in the fall when Dr. Brown was here. Those numbers have been increasing. So kudos to our faculty, kudos to our student services staff. It takes a village and we're rebuilding a village is what we're doing, but it's going to take all of us. Doctor.
Doctor Garcia, I'll have her make the last comment. I just do want to make a quick kind of shout out because it is true. I realize I collapsed two sentiments in my mind. And so normally I don't respond to chats, but I am going to respond to Chris Widenback. It is true. It is not true what I had said. What I was trying to say was that we did have many, many expenses during COVID that we didn't expect. And there were expenses in general in terms of, which is separate from the administrative hires, administrative hires are specific to the changing how we are changing in terms of our district organization and our move towards the functional map. So this is just part of the process and it is nowhere near done in terms of how it's going to look and what it's going to be shaped like. But to that point, COVID did not mean hire more administrators. I want that to be clear. Okay, Dr. Garcia, floor is yours.
Great, thank you. You know, I'm so appreciative of this conversation because I think as we talk about the enrollment academy, sometimes it can become easy to get siloed in the process of students getting in, what their experiences with applications, with high school education before they even come to our college campuses. And certainly, the conversation that we've been having around productivity and load and supporting quality teaching is one that I I really, I think many of us care about, I really care about. I look forward to the continuation of our discussion, also really looking at completion. Because a lot of the times we get lost. My experience is that sometimes we get so hyper focused on the access part that we lose sight of the good work that happens to completion or the spaces for opportunity to improve. So as we've implemented A B seven O five, how have students done? Not just an aggregate, but specifically black students, Latin neckies, A A P I, right? We start to look at those throughout. And as someone who just had the chance to review the comprehensive program reviews that our campus has done, we have some amazing strategies that faculty and staff are trying to implement to address equity gaps. So I hope that in whatever the part two version is of our continued discussion, I hope that we can dedicate some time to really disaggregate that and see how the data of students in the disaggregate inform us about what their completion journey looks like. Thank you so much.
Doctor Jackson, do you want to close the evening?
I would say this is, this is the beginning. We, I I have to say that Dr. Schenowski spurred us towards this end. And so thank you, Jennifer, for that. I don't take everything in a negative way. I really do think that this was something that was needed and it needed to be more than just a a board presentation. It really needed to be this, a discussion. So this is not the only one. We are looking at, looking at our data. We have to give Francisco a chance to do another, this is a baseline we've established and we can see what the follow up survey is. And there was a question about maybe online students, you know, we're the only ones that took the the survey. So that might be something that we add. You know, what is your preferred method? You know, are you traditionally online or are you doing it because it's advantageous? I don't know the question to ask Francisco, but I just don't want to lose that that comment that was out there. So thank you, everyone. This is just the beginning. We have a lot of work to do. But I do believe that is an insight and I will challenge you, President Reese, I do think that we can get back there. We are just not going to get the same type of student because our high school student population is dwindling. But I do believe adult learners, reentry, people that want enrichment, people that want a pathway from high school to a particular career, increasing our apprenticeship programs, which are dismal right now, I will tell you. All of those things and our C E deans came up with some great ideas. I look forward to other ideas and for us to move forward. And not all of those ideas required dollars. That is the thing. Sometimes it means that we change our mindset. So with that, thank you very much, everyone for being here. Appreciate it and look forward to further discussions in the future.